Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, September 17th, 2018, special meeting of the City Council. We would like the Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Vice Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Holman. Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Their names.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Wolbach. Seven present.
Okay. Could, we have a closed session scheduled. Could somebody make a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Okay. Would you vote on the board? Okay. We'll see you all a little later, between probably 6:00 and 6:30.
Council will be going into a closed-session conference with labor negotiators for SEIU, Palo Alto Fire Chiefs Association, International Association of Firefighters, Utilities Management Professional Association, Police Managers Association.
Again, to our meeting of September 17th, middle of the month. We have been in a conference with our labor negotiators, and we have nothing to report. We will begin tonight, though, with special orders of the day. And I am going to read this, but I would love it if, Mary, you would stand at the mic while I do that, and you may bring your friend with you. Is that going to be comfortable? If not, we can do it otherwise. Okay. Great. So, whereas, and I'll skip the whereas's after this, but we'll start with that. Mary D. Gordon is a highly acclaimed and accomplished landscape architect and garden designer, living and working in Palo Alto for the past 67 years. Quite amazing. She chaired the Palo Alto Planning Commission from 1974 to 1980, was a member for 15 years from '65 to 1980, co-chaired the first area beautification committee, called ABC, of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce in the 1950s, co-founded the Women's Workshop for Paths and Trails Committee in the 1960, and spearheaded Palo Alto's first comprehensive plan in 1980. Am I speaking loud enough? Can you hear me? Let me try this. We'll give you a copy of this, but...
Turn up.
Pardon? Let me get this close. Does that help?
Yes.
Is that any better?
Yes.
Good. Okay. I've just said wonderful things about you, and I'll continue on. She was instrumental in baylands protection and master plan development, and the open space protection in the foothills. And Mary designed over a thousand gardens and estates. You have all, everyone in this room has seen Mary's work. I know you have, whether you think you have or not. And she's done that on estates and residences, commercial, throughout Palo Alto and the Bay Area during her 67-year career private practice. So, whereas, Mary has worked tirelessly to develop and support a regional paths and trail network around the bay, she has guided and developed landscape plans in details to increase the tree canopy and help beautify our Palo Alto over the past 12 years, especially with our schools. And she's been the recipient of the 2012 Canopy Tree Award, as well as, let me come to this, as well as numerous garden design awards and honors, and her designs have appeared in books, on the covers of Sunset Magazine, and Better Homes and Gardens. I'll bet there's not another person in here that can say they have appeared on the cover of Sunset, Better Homes and Gardens, and so forth. That's really an amazing accomplishment. Now, therefore, I, Liz Niss, Mayor of the City of Palo Alto, on behalf of the City Council do hereby recognize Mary Gordon for expertise, artistic landscape works, and her service to the City of Palo Alto and the surrounding region, which has left enduring impressions on our lives and enriched our public and private spaces for decades to come. I think some of my colleagues may want to speak to that, and then I will come down and give you the proclamation, and then we will give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Karen, Holman.
Yes. Mary, I'm really glad you're here today. And it's been a long time coming. It's been a long time in the works, but I'm really glad and delighted that you're here this evening. And Liz mentioned that, in the proclamation, that you've influenced a lot of gardens and left a lot of imprint on our landscapes. I don't know how many other people have been watching advertisements for real estate for so many years, but for many, many years, and I think still once in a while, we see an advertisement for a property, and it advertises, it promotes, that a Mary Gordon designed garden. And I don't know how many people could claim that either. So, your influence, your work for all these decades is beyond admirable. I am, and we all are indebted to you, and thank you.
So, Mary, I'm going to give you this proclamation, but before I do that, let me have you say a few words, if you would like to.
Yeah. Yes, I think I would, I should say, in here.
Right in there. And do just what I did, kind of look like you're going to eat an ice cream cone.
Is this, do you hear me? I'd like to say, first of all, you know, we live in paradise. We absolutely do. I can't tell you how fortunate I've felt over and over and over to be in this community in California, in this climate. How lucky can you get? It's incredible. And therefore, I feel that, you know, I have a responsibility, I have a responsibility as everyone else in this room, everyone in Palo Alto, everyone has, of really honoring that privilege and moving forward with it. So, I could say many, many things, but it's, as I listen to the news today, saw what's happening all around the country, and here we are, still lucky, yes, extremely lucky, but still, I think, devoted to those kinds of things that have made Palo Alto, California, including the whole area of the state, what it is. And I'm very proud of that. And all that, all of you do, these hours you spend, and I spent many hours in these chambers, as a matter of fact, doing the same kind of thing. But thank you so much, and we have to carry, we have to carry on, and hope we can stem some of the tide that is going against us, and soon enough.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. I'm going to give you the proclamation. Are you going to say something? Oh, good. Come right up. Come right up. Do you want to say something first, or do you want to take Mary back first?
I'm just the first on...
Oh, okay. Okay. Why don't we do this first, present this? Who's got, someone got a camera tonight? We all without cameras?
I've got one.
So, I'd like to get a picture of Mary getting her proclamation. Okay. We'll get it in our newsletter, too. Okay. So, I'm going to give this to you, Mary. You're going to have her sit down?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Why don't you stay at the mic?
Yeah, just because you'll be alone.
Oh, you want to sit down? I'm going to go back up to you. Oh, my chair. Okay. I'll hold. Oh, yes. And I'm very proud of it. That's yours to keep, I promise.
So, should I start? Okay.
You can go ahead. My name is Ann Ingles, and I am a landscape architect. Mary Gordon is my mentor and my friend. I have admired Mary since I worked for her in the mid-1980s as a drafts person, and more recently with plans for the Palo Alto Unified School District. I am currently working with her on two garden design projects. I think so highly of Mary Gordon's work that I am documenting her professional history as a planner and a landscape architect. I, along with Mary's daughter Ruth, am preserving and archiving her drawings and recording her oral and visual history. We have retained a landscape photographer to document her gardens. I have recorded many hours of interviews with Mary. In fact, a videographer is here now filming this presentation. As I document her history, it is clear to me that anyone who has crossed paths with Mary, both personally and professionally, is better for having known her. She is truly loved by her friends, clients, and colleagues. In the words of a retired editor for the Palo Alto Weekly, "Mary's landscape embraced not just properties and gardens, but a vast region of the Bay Area, California, and beyond." I'd like to read a short quote by Beth Clark, which I feel captures the essence of Mary Gordon's contributions as a visionary, a planner, and a landscape architect. "I've noticed something about people who make a difference in the world. They hold the unshakable conviction that individuals are extremely important, that every life matters. They get excited over one smile. They are willing to feed one stomach, educate one mind, and treat one wound. They aren't determined to revolutionize the world all at once. They're satisfied with small changes. Over time, though, the small changes add up. Sometimes, they even transform cities and nations, and, yes, the world." Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. Do you want to speak now? Okay. So, we have four others who would like to speak. Emily Renzel, Enid Pearson, Don Whedon, and Ruth Gordon. So, come on up, and I know you all know what to do. Get close to the mic. People have been telling us lately they have trouble hearing us, and I think it's because our system is rather outdated, even though we've discussed that often.
Mayor Niss and members of the council, I'm going to claim old age and ask you to forgive me if I go slightly over my time. Lots of long titles in this. Mary Gordon has always been a woman ahead of her time. In the 1950s and 60s, before the women's liberation movement, Mary established her own successful landscape design business, which has continued with her daughter today. I first met Mary when I attended Planning Commission meetings in the early 1970s. That makes me really old. Mary Gordon, together with Frances Brenner, worked tirelessly for enlightened planning in Palo Alto. In 1973, I joined Mary and Frances on the commission, and I'm very grateful for the many lessons in planning that they provided. Both women were visionary and passionate in their efforts. The mindset of 1960s planning, in case you don't remember, until Mary came along in the 70s, did not delve too deeply into the impacts of most of the activities espoused and totally ignored the value of wetlands. The 1962 County Parks and Recreation Open Space Element of the general plan said, "Now a neglected, inaccessible area of salt ponds, marshland, and garbage dumps, the waterfront could be an attractive marine playground. Shoreline parks provide in-and-out-of-water activities for all the family, harbors for boating, swimming lagoons, fishing ponds, golf courses, playgrounds. The map showed seaside homes, a resort motel, excursion boats, et cetera. Even a college campus in the Palo Alto flood basin was shown. With Mary's efforts, a new paradigm was established to protect our bay. When the Palo Alto Yacht Harbor, run by the county, came in for yet another dredging, there had been many dredging permit in 1975, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission required that a master plan for disposal of dredging spoils be adopted before they would approve the dredging. I personally witnessed Mary's finesse when she parried that dredge spoil plan into Palo Alto's first baylands master plan, and covering the entire Palo Alto baylands. It was brilliant, and it has served Palo Alto well right up to today. Bixby Park, dedicated in 1965, was being used as a landfill, which was scheduled to close in 1967. It did not close until more than 50 years later. The problem was that the city had not yet found an alternative for garbage disposal. Use of Bixby Park for garbage disposal continued with multiple vertical expansions until, at long last, the city closed it and began the long-anticipated park development. Mary's baylands master plan provided early guidance for this park, and it continues today. Mary has had a passionate interest in trail and pathway connections between parks and open space and along our creeks throughout the county. I'm vaguely recalling that Mary and Artemis Ginston started a group called Women's Workshop for Paths and Trails, or something like that. They wanted the county to have a trails and pathways master plan that all the jurisdictions would incorporate into their plans. Both women then served for years on the county planning policy committee's Trails and Pathways Subcommittee, promoting their vision. Many of the regional trails that now exist are a result of their hard work in the 1970s. So, Mary, my tenacious, passionate, and visionary friend, all the citizens of Palo Alto and the greater Mid Peninsula area, indeed, the whole county, are truly indebted to you for all your efforts. Thank you so much.
Enid Pearson, followed by Don Whedon, and then Ruth Gordon.
This gets harder every year. All right. Let's see if I can do this. Well, we've heard a lot about the planning commissioner of Mary, oh, mayor, and members of the council. But I'm going to tell you a little bit about the other side of Mary that you probably don't know. One day, Mary called me and said, "Enid, I've just been given reservations for a night at the Vogel Song, High Camp 6. Let's do it." So, I confess, I had done some backpacking in the High Sierras with my kids, and we loved it. So, I asked, "How many can I bring?" And she said, "We have four reservations." So, I asked my 12-year-old daughter and her friend if they wanted to do this, and they said, "Oh, yes. The Sierra Club still offers high Sierra hiking from Camp 1 to Camp 6, and you can hike from camp to camp with proper reservations." So, we drove to the El Portal entrance to Yosemite. We rented a motel room. About 2:00 in the morning, our cabin was shaken by a very strong earthquake. We all run out and join all the other campers, and then we all go back in. We considered it insignificant. We drive then to Twalome Meadows. It's early morning, and we host our 25-pound backpacks full of water bottles and snacks, like nuts and high-density candy bars, enough for two days of hiking. Twalome is at 7,000 feet. The trails to Vogel Song are ragged and rocky and uphill. It's about 6.8 miles to Vogel Song, which is at 10,130 feet. God, Mary, we must have been nuts. Anyway, our elevation gain was about 2,000 to 3,000 feet, and we hiked all day. We arrived in time for dinner. We sat around a campfire, and we bedded down in our tent cabin. We got up early for breakfast, did a little day hike to enjoy the high altitude, and then started back to our car in Twalome Meadows. My daughter remembers a lot of laughing, and Mary and I could not sit down, because once we did, we were pretty sure we couldn't get back up. We'd been hiking another full day. Here's another Mary you probably never saw. Again, the phone call. "Enid, the peaches are ripe in Central Valley. They're giving them away." So, off we go with my daughter and her friend and a carload of paper bags. The peaches are ripe, and all the low-hanging fruit is gone. So, all we have to do is drag those huge wooden ladders from tree to tree, climb up and pick, and we did all day. We picked until we couldn't stuff another peach into the car. We both spent the next two weeks canning dozens of quarts of peaches. I believe it is Mary Gordon's spontaneity, leadership, and knowledge of the land that produced Palo Alto's first comprehensive baylands master plan. And before Mary's influence, these 1,800 acres were considered salvageable lands, doomed for development. Today, visitors from around the world view our marshes and birds as extraordinary. Thank you, Mary, for your hard work and diligence and enormously creative planning. I think my council had the honor of pointing Mary to a planning commission, I think for two terms. Anyway, thank you, Mary.
Oh, these are well-known names from the past, not to date you, but it's nice to see you, Don.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor Niss and members of the council. My name is Don Whedon. I worked for Santa Clara County Planning for about 34 years, and for a relatively brief period of that time, I had the great honor to work with Mary as she chaired the Trails and Pathways Subcommittee, which produced, as was mentioned earlier, a county-wide Trails and Pathways Master Plan for Santa Clara County, which has been the basic blueprint for the last 40 years. In fact, I recently spoke at the Friends of Stevens Creek Trail 25th Anniversary and pointed out to them that we now have enough trail, urban trails alone within that, that are on-the-ground developed, that you could walk on them all the way from here to San Francisco and back. That's quite an accomplishment, Mary. None of that, most of that did not exist when she was, when they developed that plan. So, Mary, along with Artemis Ginston, who has been mentioned also, deserve an awful lot of credit for that. Switching to a slightly different hat that I wear, I've been on the Bay Trail Board for the last 30 years or so, San Francisco Bay Trail, to create a 300-mile loop trail around the perimeter of the bay. And one of the things that I had, back when that was created, I had to educate them from around the region, that they were not the ones, the first ones to think of it. It was Mary and the group that had the Trails and Pathways Committee. In fact, we had the very first, I have photos here of Mary and Betsy Bechtel and Artemis Ginston cutting the ribbon for the very first section of the Bayfront Trail in Santa Clara County in 1983. So, thank you so much, Mary, for all that you've done. You have left a lasting legacy that will benefit current and generations to come. Thank you so much.
Hi. And Ruth Gordon, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Ruth Gordon, daughter of Mary. That's better. So, of course, I'm very proud of my mom, lived through all those years, with her being gone all those nights until midnight at these meetings, but I think it was all worth it, for sure. And recently, we were at a client's a few days ago, Pat and Tom Sanders. Unfortunately, Pat couldn't be here because she had another meeting, but she did write something she wanted me to read, which I think is lovely. "Mary Gordon creates beauty. She is aware of nature, which includes people, plants, insects, soil, water, and animals. She provides for all of them. Her gardens last. They look good when planted, but they attain their richness and depth as the decades progress. Her gardens are therapeutic on both physical and emotional levels." And, this is from Pat, "Very few women in their 90s are known for their curves. Mary is." Thank you.
Men in their 90s are known for their curves, and Mary, you are. So, Greg Scharf?
So, Mary, I also wanted to thank you for your service. We do live in paradise. I totally agree, and your gardens are beautiful. But it's, you're really, we're lucky that you're sustained service over the years. I mean, when I look at this, you know, 1965 to 1980, on the Planning Commission, chair for roughly 10 years, when I look at that, and I say to myself, there are very few people that have shaped the community in such a way that it lasts, and it's for the good. You know, you've saved the baylands. They're here for everyone to enjoy. I love the trails. And I just really wanted to say thank you very much.
It's a thrill for us all.
It is.
So, thank you for coming tonight. It was really a pleasure, and we'll all look back to see some of your gardens that I know are in Sunset and Better Homes and Gardens. So, appreciate your being here tonight.
I just have to stand up with you. You don't do it alone. You really don't. We do it together, and that's what makes this a wonderful area, wonderful community, a caring thing, and it's a thrill, and we're so privileged. Thank you.
Thank you again for being here. Our next, our next item is kind of along the same lines, in a way, because this is also thinking of how we protect our environment, how we protect what's around us. And this is the recognition of businesses participating in the Clean Water Action Rethink Disposable Program. And Phil, you're going to introduce this tonight.
Very quickly. Phil Vogel, Public Works. Thanks, Mayor. And you're right, a very hard act to follow, but the relationship is that now we face another threat to our wetlands, our bay, and our ocean, and that's single-use items, plastic principally, that is used and then becomes litter in the environment and a threat to our wildlife. So, we really appreciate being able to honor and thank eight of our local businesses, restaurants, which have participated with the city and Clean Water Action, an environmental advocacy group, to put on a program, which they call Rethink Disposables. And I'm going to introduce Chris, who's going to, with Clean Water Action, that's going to give you just a little bit more about the program, and then, Mayor, it'll be back to you to say a couple words about each of these businesses, and they're sitting right over here, and we're so grateful to have them here tonight. Chris?
This is about these tags.
Hello. Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the City of Palo Alto for hosting this award ceremony. This event represents a milestone in our three-year partnership with the City of Palo Alto. My name is Chris Slaffter, and I am with Clean Water Action, and I'm leading the Rethink Disposable Project here in Palo Alto. And we're here today to recognize our first Rethink Disposable certified and participating food service businesses, who are all right behind me, right here, for reducing foodware, packaging, and waste, and to applaud them for being environmental stewards and business leaders. So, I'm talking for a moment about what the Rethink Disposable Program is. And I'm hitting the button, and nothing's happening. Oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you. So, foodware packaging, like the single-use plastic cups, lids, utensils, and containers, and straws that you see on the left-hand side of the slide, these items are a primary pollutant in our environment. They generate too much waste. They become litter and contaminates the threat, and they threaten the health of our local creeks, the San Francisco Bay, and our ocean. So, to prevent this flow of trash and pollution, Clean Water Action is... So to prevent this flow of trash and pollution, Clean Water Action has developed the Rethink Disposable Certification Program for food service operators that aims to stop this waste before it starts. So we work with restaurants to offer recommendations and technical assistance to eliminate single-use foodware items and transition to using reusables for onsite dining. These changes to reusables save money, they reduce litter, they educate customers, and as customers report, improve the dining, overall dining experience. I should also note that the Rethink Disposable Service is part of a larger effort by Palo Alto Environmental Services staff to develop a plastic reduction plan, which will also include fast-food restaurants. And you'll be hearing more about that in the months to follow. This doesn't seem to like me.
Can you explain the slide a little? I can see what's under it, but just tell us what the, what the contents are of whatever the food is sitting on?
Yes. So that, go back one. Sorry, okay, thank you. So that's a transition of the single-use foodware items to reusable. So what you see there is a slice of pizza under a paper plate that's been transitioned to a metal tray. You'll see a gelato bar that's in a paper food tray that has gone over to a reusable plate. And then, on the bottom, you'll see paper food trays that have been transitioned to baskets, and paper cups that have been transitioned to reusable cups.
Thanks.
You're very welcome. Yeah, thank you for asking. Okay, so we have just completed the second year of a three-year partnership, and we're very excited to share these results, impressive results, and we look forward to continuing momentum into the coming year. We have certified five businesses to date: Kirk's Steak Burgers, New York Pizza, Sprout Cafe, Gelatayao, Palo Alto Baking Company. And we are now also working with the Oshman Family Jewish Community Center, Teaspoon, and The Counter. And I am proud to announce that of the four businesses, so of the five businesses that we've certified, we've collected data from four of them. And of the four businesses that we have collected data from, we have, those businesses have prevented the use of over half a million single-use foodware items each year. The businesses have collectively saved over $13,000 a year and have prevented almost 8,000 pounds of trash each year. And so to talk more about those businesses, introduce them, I'm going to hand it back over to you, Mayor Liz Niss.
Thank you very much. I'm going to come down in a minute, but first I wanted to read this about the business owners who are here. And maybe you'd like to stand up while I'm reading it, so they recognize who, who I'm reading this about. So, thanks Joanna. So before I start reading this, would you mind just saying, just yell out loud what your business is? I'll start down here at the left.
Oshman Family Jewish Community Center, Nurish Cafe.
Thanks.
The Counter, Farmy Hamburgers.
The Counter, right.
Palo Alto Baking Company.
New York Pizza.
Which one, I'm sorry?
New York Pizza.
Thanks.
Kirk's Steak Burgers.
Great. Okay, so, we really appreciate the leadership that you've taken on and the chance to really think, rethink disposable. We really appreciate the efforts, hope that more restaurants will follow your lead. Also want to thank the leadership of Clean Water Action in developing this terrific program that helps restaurants across the Bay Area. So if you'd hold your applause, I'm going to go down and, with Phil's help, pass out certificates and say something about each person and what their contribution and change has been. So Phil, while you pass out certificates, I will, I will read. So Phil's giving the certificates while I do this. So gelato now serves Palo Alto's finest gelato bars on a reusable plate, and water and glasses. And I wonder, Corey, could you hold your glass up tonight so they can see we're using reusable glasses that have the Palo Alto seal on them? So thank you, gelato, right down there, thank you so much.
I'm Italian.
Oh, do it again.
Gelatayao.
Gelatayao. Ah, it sounds much better that way. So next is Kirk's. Kirk's was the first restaurant to sign up and successfully complete the Rethink Disposable Program by replacing paper food trays with baskets and disposable cups with glass. So thank you so much. And we have seen much of that in the slide that you put up before. New York Pizza. New York Pizza was Palo Alto's first chain to sign up and successfully complete the Rethink Disposable Program by using metal trays, cups, and silverware rather than disposable items. Thank you for doing that. Next is Palo Alto Baking. Palo Alto Baking Company now serves customers onsite with all reusable foodware items. Very impressive, all of them. Nothing gets thrown away. Terrific. Sprout Cafe achieved significant results by simply replacing single-use water cups with reusable water cups and reducing napkin use.
She couldn't make it.
Yes, I didn't think I saw her here. Next, Teaspoon is Palo Alto's first baba tea restaurant to participate in the Rethink Disposable Program, and now will be serving baba tea in mason jars for customers onsite.
And Liz, you can learn too. Yeah, she has to. But it's.
I'm here to accept all the awards.
Oh, great.
And I'm tired, I learned about this, I didn't know, it's boba tea.
Oh dear.
Yes, boba tea. I've been educated by our younger members more than.
So I'm also going to guess that boba tea is the one that has the gelatinous bubbles in it? Is that the one?
Exactly.
Right. So you need a special straw for that, I'm guessing?
Well, we're still discussing, but you really need a special straw.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. The Counter. The Counter is replacing single-use plastic kids' cups with a reusable cup and pioneering the change at their Palo Alto location. And my husband actually told me about you when you first did it. So I, I heard about it right up front, which I was delighted about.
And they are, through our Girl Scouts, have signed up to work on straws.
Yes, yes. Right, right.
And Peter, who's in charge of.
Right, thanks for reminding me of that, yes. The Girl Scouts made quite an impression on us, so thanks for following up. Yes. So next, Oshman Family Jewish Community Center, which has the Nurish Cafe and is ambitiously replacing all their disposable foodware items with reusable foodware items for in-house dining. So with that, would you join me in a big round of applause for those who've made a big difference in our community? I don't know how to do it, but I think it would be valuable to do that. Okay, taking us back now to oral communications. Sorry, just a moment. Agenda changes, additions, and deletions, anything on that line, right after number three? Don't see anything, so we're going on to oral communications. They are listed up on the board, Roger Smith, Stephanie Munoz, and Herb Borack. So come on down. First one is Roger. Are you here? Hi, Roger.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Niss. My name's Roger Smith. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about something that is on, I think, all of our minds. I had occasion to be at all three of the incumbent folks' kickoff parties, and they all did a super job. If you were not there, Eric gave us a full discussion of all the problems and all the challenges, which is huge, huge, huge. But I think every candidate said they wanted to take a hard look at commuters cutting through the neighborhoods. So I'm here tonight to ask for your help. My daughter lives at 3795 Redwood Circle, right at the corner of Carlson and, and Redwood Circle. If you're a smart commuter, you're whipping down Alma going south, you'll hang a left after East Meadow and cut through and get on Redwood Circle. So you miss the light at Charleston and, and Alma, because you also get the train tracks there. So you whip over to Redwood Circle, you can go one-half a mile without a stop sign. And as you know, if it's a circle, that's more like a racetrack, so you can get going up very, very fast. She lives there with my three-year-old granddaughter. Also, there's no stop sign. People come to let their kids off to go to, I believe it's Hoover School. They park there and they have to cut across, so it is a very, very dangerous thing. So I really, really need your help in addressing that problem before somebody gets hit, and so I thank you very much.
So Roger, we will ask staff to follow up on that, and I know you've discussed it with me before, and the wheels around stop signs often move slowly, but we'll have staff take a look at it and get back to you.
It may even be, my daughter and I have visited about this, maybe a temporary roundabout would be something to just slow the people down, and, because it's truly dangerous, and I really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Good, thanks, thanks so much for coming. Next speaker is Stephanie Munoz. This is now into oral communications tonight. And after Stephanie is Herb Borack.
Let me apologize, I came so late, I thought I would be way down on the list. I've come to suggest to you that you seem to be in a wonderful place, but actually, you're between a rock and a hard place. It looks as if you have the best of both worlds. You'll satisfy the people of Palo Alto by doing most of what they want, but you always have the option of doing something that they don't particularly want, because you passed a law that says they can do it. Now, we're coming up on one that is going to call this way of doing business into question. We have this situation with the President Hotel, and the law protects you. You don't, you are not obliged to keep A.J. Capital from emptying that building. No, 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 no. But the way that things have played out, you have allowed A.J. Capital to think that they are going to be able to make that into a hotel, and they will not be able to do it without the council's consent. Greg Scharf is a good partisan for the businesses of this community, and that's great, because we need these businesses, they give our town interest and vibrancy. But he's not going to be on the council. The rest of you are. And when A.J. wants to get that variance, the people of Palo Alto are not going to let you do it. They're just not going to. It's going to be the most divisive thing you have ever had in the whole history of Palo Alto. I recommend that you just quietly have some little chats with them, because you could just leave the president tenants in there, and it would be, it would be a good thing for A.J., because they aren't going to get as much business, they aren't going to get 100, 100 tenants in their high business, their $500 a night hotel, because there are other hotels in town which use some of that business. These hotels did not have a full house when Stanford graduated last, last, last year. I know, because my grandson graduated that year. And if they have one more hotel, it's going to be at the expense of the other hotels. So it really wouldn't hurt for them to have half and half. And you could quietly talk to them about it and not get rid of these people. I thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Herb Borack. Again, this is oral communications, so if any of you're here for an item that's not on the agenda called oral communications, this is the time to speak. Otherwise, if you're here for one of the other items, that will come up a bit later. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Niss. Three weeks ago, I distributed a letter during oral communications, asking you to terminate the PC Zone District as a means for new applications while retaining language to enforce existing PC Zone districts. At that time, I told you that I would also try to provide my suggestions in the form of what would be sections of the existing ordinance or new sections, and some of you it may be easier to do it that way rather than translating, taking the text of a letter and seeing how that would look in the municipal code. So I'll be having the clerk hand you copies of that when I finish speaking. And I also thought, for those of you who are relatively new, that this is a new, not a new problem. In fact, Bob Moss, who's here this evening, wrote an article about the PC Zone District or wildcard zoning 40 years ago, and I'll provide you a copy of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cole, I think it's Ikbal Sarang, and then John Vermees.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. Our staff here and all the people listening at home, I would like to cordially invite you to Bike Palo Alto officially, happening this September, Sunday, September 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., happening at Fair Meadow School. This event is in its ninth year, and we showcase all the fun and easy ways to get around Palo Alto by bike. There are three different routes, all less than 10 miles, so it's very family-friendly. There's three treat stops on each route, and it's in conjunction with the Walks and Rolls event happening in the schools just the week following. So I invite you all to come out and find the neat ways to get around Palo Alto, and perhaps we can show you a few neat pathways that you may not know. So come and join us. Thank you. See pahalo, BikePaloAlto.org for more information and to pre-register. But it is a free event, everyone's welcome. Thank you.
David, is this the same event where you give out the T-shirts with the bikes on them, or not?
We have this year some T-shirts mainly for volunteers, but there's an opportunity with what we have is called the Frequent Rider Card. So you'll get a mark for each treat stop that you stop at, and then you have to go out and get one more place on your own, it's the honor system. When you turn this card in, you will be invited to a celebration where we will have prizes to give away for those people that go that extra step and do an extra, an extra trip that they might have taken the car for by bike. And we will have some of those T-shirts to give away at that time, as well as other prizes. So do look at the website and come and join us, it's a fun event.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Ikbal, and again, I'll let you say your name, it's somewhat hard.
Ikbal Sarang, you did fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to talk about the Palo Alto Weekly Editorial and some rather disturbing articles. The editorial is titled "Unprecedented Obfuscation: After a Debate Filled with Disingenious Comments, Council Turns Its Back on Renters." It was very disappointing to be prepared to speak to an agenda item that ends up getting delayed and delayed and passed on. It was also disappointing to hear the arguments and amendments being brought in just to delay and, and play the political game. You are there to make hard decisions. You are there to make hard decisions. It behooves me to sit through your session last time not wanting to discuss an item. How do you stand with that? Not even wanting to discuss an item? Where are we, in progressive Palo Alto or Trump land? Bringing the units from 50 to two? Is that productive? Yet everyone feels strongly about considerations for renters and wants to do something. When is that going to happen? This is at epidemic levels. There are close to 50% of our population in Palo Alto who are renters. They will vote. If I had a vote after last week, I would have voted a few people off this chamber because of how obvious it was to just delay and kick it forward. I'm sorry. I am emotional, and I am very disappointed. I hope you take the time to make these decisions. These issues are real. They are only expanding. There's a renter issue. There's a rent control issue. There's an existing ordinance that states one-year time limit before evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. John Vermees.
Honorable Madam Mayor, respected City Council members and hard-working staff. I have been living in downtown Palo Alto since 1982. And I've been in the President for probably about 13, 14 months. I owned a home, co-owned it with my wife prior to that, on University Avenue. Prior to that, I lived in the President for 25 years. We are not talking about affordable housing, and we are not talking about a luxury hotel that might or might not come in. If you look into what the Graduate Hotels are, they're a very cleverly themed Holiday Inn-type hotel for commodity travelers. These guys are good at what they do, which is marketing. They are very good at what they do. They're a $3 billion firm. So again, this is not about affordable housing. We are an eclectic group of people. I'm a longstanding entrepreneur. There are people who really are hurting. I don't have an assured retirement, but it's not about me. What it's about is a diverse and eclectic group of people and housing that is extremely necessary for this town, which I know so well. It is not an affordable housing issue. It's also not a rent control issue. It's an issue of properly managing the housing stock in this town, which is part of the infrastructure. We need infrastructure. We need housing in the form that allows for the people who take care of the everyday maintenance of our town in every respect of the word. So I'm here not to ask for money for myself. I'm not here to ask for any favors. I'm here to say, please understand that what is really going on is not what appears to be going on. Again, it's not about luxury hotels, and it's not about affordable housing. It's about commodity housing, and it's about a mid-tier hotel that's cleverly themed by very smart marketeers. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And unless there is someone else on Oral Communications, I think that finishes it for tonight. So that takes us now to our study session. And you'll notice that on maybe an agenda, if you have an old one, we were going to have a study session on airplane noise, which, excuse me, will come in a date uncertain. And then the pre-screening of our proposal to rezone the property at 788 San Antonio Road. As I understand, Mr. City Manager, we move that to October 1st. I should look to Beth.
Beth, it's either the 1st or the 15th, the 788 hearing.
We tried to move it to the 1st because I think it has some time value.
It is the 15th. Right now, we have the 980 Middlefield Road. The mortuary use was the one that was moved to the 1st.
Okay. For those who are listening, I will at least pursue the 1st.
Okay.
And then our starring tonight is a review of the public safety building design and the project status. And I think I will ask City Manager Jim to kick it off, and then I know it will go to the rest of you. And also, the chief is here tonight, is he not?
Yes.
Good. So we have both the chief and we have...
Is it the chief, Patty?
Yes. No, I'm just looking. I don't know the man next to you, I'm sorry to say.
Good evening. I'm Michael Ross, Principal at Ross Drilvis Cusenberry Architecture. We're the architects for the project.
Okay, thank you. I know Patty you're familiar with, Brad, and so forth. So Jim?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item is here before you, partly just opportunistically. We have a number of infrastructure projects in various stages of design and feel that it's important to keep the council as informed as possible. The public safety building, one, because of the project itself, but two, its interrelationship with the parking garage, which you have already awarded a contract to and which we're about to begin construction on. So we had this time. We're here to, in a study session format, update the council as it's indicated. And this is being done in advance of what I understand at least could be the final ARB hearing on this building design and project this Thursday. So the council will have an opportunity to get briefed and to certainly share your comments with our staff. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brad Eggleson, who is interim Public Works Director. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council. I'm Brad Eggleson, interim Director of Public Works, and we're happy to be with you this evening to give you this update on the public safety building project. Let's see, we have Patty Lum, the Assistant Police Chief, and Michael Ross from RDC, who introduced himself, in addition to Chief Johnson. There are a number of other public safety and public works staff who are involved in the project here in the room. So I briefly wanted to touch again on a little of the project background and just remind us all that this is a project that's been in the works from not too long after the current police building was opened back in 1970. So beginning in 1997, there were studies and evaluations of the police building. There was a police building, Blue Ribbon Task Force. There was the Ibrok Commission. Both of those citizens groups recommended that we move forward with a public safety building on a new site, and that that should be considered one of the city's top priority in infrastructure. And again, the 2014 council infrastructure plan defined the public safety building as the top priority. In fact, it was the only one of those nine projects that was actually prioritized. And then just to remind you, it was 2015, end of the year, when council selected the sites for the public safety building and the Calav Garage. And most recently, earlier this year, the environmental impact report for both the projects was certified. So a couple of the more recent developments. Earlier this year, we got the ARB recommendation on approval of the design for the parking garage. I just mentioned the EIR, but that council's action also coincided with approving the land use entitlements for the garage. And then we've now had a preliminary ARB review and two formal ARB reviews, the second of which was in July. And as Jim mentioned, three days from now, on Thursday, will be the third formal ARB review, which typically under their process, it's kind of limited to three formal reviews. And given the comments we received that were quite favorable from the second review, we're kind of expecting that we'll get their recommendation for approval of the project on Thursday. So then the next steps coming up, both of these before the end of the year. We should be back to council for actual approval of the public safety building project, like you did for the garage back in June. We'll also be bringing a construction contract for the Calav Garage. That project should be out to bid tomorrow morning, and so we'll be awarding a contract and then beginning construction. Notice to proceed December, but we think breaking ground would be January for the project. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Ross to present the current design that the ARB will be seeing on Thursday.
Thank you, Brad. Well, it's a great pleasure being here, and thank you for this opportunity. Clearly, this has been a collaborative effort. I've been involved in this project for over a long span of years. And what was interesting about it, it's been vetted approximately seven different times since we joined it in terms of its size, need, neighborhood compatibility, and opportunity for the public in the neighborhoods to share their thoughts about the necessity, location, and program. And so with that, I'd really like to acknowledge the work of other people. And that begins with your community and the neighborhoods and the Calav Garage, California Avenue Merchants Association, and the Blue Ribbon Task Force, the Planning Department, Department of Public Works, importantly, the Police Department, Fire Department, Office of Emergency Services, and many other players who made this possible. Let's see if we can... Just kind of use the wheel there. Oh, the wheel, okay. So this project is made up of three primary parts. The new 636-space California Avenue parking garage, which goes out to bid tomorrow morning, and approximately 47,500-square-foot new public safety building, which is associated with a surface operational yard and accessory buildings built over two levels of secure parking. As you know, the California Avenue Garage has been approved and will go out to bid This is the site, and it's a neighborhood that in transition, it's evolving. It includes the California Avenue Merchant Street, three-story residential units, the 65-foot-high county courthouse, a new 29,000-square-foot building under construction on Park, the new Visa Building, the new California Avenue Garage, and now this building, the new public safety building. We believe that when you view this evolving neighborhood, that the new public safety building is going to settle nicely into this evolving neighborhood. The new public safety building, this is a view from the corner of Birch and Sherman. It's a specialized building that when you first look at it, you realize it has to balance security with openness. Why is it a specialized building? Because it must address the necessities of survivability, hardening, redundancy, be a 24/7 operational building following a major earthquake or other type of disaster. It's a key piece of public safety infrastructure that is being designed to last for many, many years. What's interesting about the building in its current form is that it's being designed so it doesn't feel fortress. It feels like it's part of the civic fabric of the community, and it's being designed to be neighborly. And it's basically a building that's surrounded by a landscaped frame, and the landscaped frame does many duties, including providing seat walls, planting street trees, and also provide security for the facility. This is a view towards the public entry of the building. It's off of the forecourt that's on Birch Street. The edges of the building have been designed so it's pedestrian-friendly and pedestrian-scaled, street trees, planters, seat walls, bike racks, and everything necessary to support an activated streetscape. This is a view down Sherman from Park. Behind the sign that says "Public Safety" is this accessory buildings that also screen the large-vehicle parking areas that are in that lot. This is a view from Park towards the back of the building. It includes a communications tower. This is a view down Jackaranda. Out on the street edge is the multipurpose room. We've reduced the scale of the building and brought that room closer to the street edge and made it a one-story element right at the street. What happens between the public safety building and the garage across the street is basically it widens the public realm between those two features, that this building has the monumental stair and the public lobby and street trees landing, and the public safety building itself has an lair of trees, seat walls, and it creates this three-dimensional space and widening of the public realm between the two buildings, and that was a conscious design feature. When you view the public safety building from the stairway of the California Avenue Garage, basically you see an open plazascape with many street trees, street furniture, and the entry to the public safety building. The landscape and the architecture forms a continuous, single-story pedestrian realm that's identified by a terracotta-colored, cast-in-place concrete board form element that wraps it. You can see it here. It's being depicted as this unifying color. And inserted and embedded in this landscaped frame, this pedestrian ribbon that wraps the building are seats, vehicle barriers, planters, and a number of other features that are critical to not only the pleasantry of being next to the building, but also provide biofiltration and retention of stormwater and other necessities. There's two vertical inflections. One is the entry. The terracotta-colored wall goes up at the entry, as well as the communications tower indicating a connection to the larger region. The landscape is going to emphasize native planting and drought-tolerant plant material. The materials are going to be three-part, that are depicted in public context, in mission realm, and they are basically terracotta-colored board form concrete base, a tile mid-band, and then at the third floor, reflective white porcelain tile and glazing with steel detailing. At night, the new building will softly glow. It will be a beacon of public safety. This is a 24/7 building, and it must remain available to the citizenry at all hours. This is a 24/7 building, and it must remain available to the citizenry at all hours. Inside the building are some costly features that are really unique to buildings like this, including the emergency 911 Communication Center, Emergency Operations Center, property and evidence processing, prisoner processing and holding, and other features that are unique to this building type and very different than office buildings. So with that, this is a brief overview of what's going to be presented to the ARB this coming Thursday. We believe that the building is going to be a good neighbor and provide for the mission of the Palo Alto Police Department for the long term. Thank you for this opportunity to present this brief overview.
So, so thank you for coming, and I'm sure there are going to be questions from my colleagues here. One of mine is simply a design question. The top, and granted, all the tops are pretty flat. Did you think of giving it any more roof interest, or was there some reason for not doing that, or, okay, could you, could you say more?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question.
We don't have snow here, so I know that's not an issue.
Well, we are at our, our height limit because there's a higher floor-to-floor height for this building, and we are actually focusing on keeping it as a relatively clean roofscape. We've taken virtually all the mechanical equipment off the roof except for the communications tower. And the mechanical equipment is in the accessory buildings at street level, screened from the sidewalks behind that wall. So it was a conscious design decision to do that.
Good. Thank you. I really appreciate that because it, it struck me as, although few people are going to certainly see it as they walk around, it's just you'd only see it from a distance.
I'm happy that you recognized it because if you would take a look at the elevation, really the roof is a very quiet plain, and the busyness happens underneath it. It wraps up, goes over, and then all of the fenestration and detailing happens underneath this simple frame, and that was also a conscious decision on our part.
Before I go to Greg, Brad, did you have comments that you wanted to make?
Yes, the presentation continues with some items about the cost of the project. I have more presentation.
Okay. Yeah. Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Okay. So let's go with the architecture and then with the reality of what it's going to take to build it. So Greg Sharp and then Tom DeBois.
So first of all, from a functional perspective, does it do everything the Police Department wants?
So we believe as proposed in the two-basement level, it absolutely does do everything we need it to do. And as you know, that's because of the space constraints of that site. That's particularly why we needed to go down further, and we'll get to that later. But operationally, as proposed, yes.
Okay. So for the architect, is this going to be an attractive building? Because in the pictures, it actually doesn't look that attractive. It's hard to judge, but it just doesn't.
I think it's going to be a very attractive building, and it's going to feel like it belongs there when it's constructed. And I want to also commend the ARB because I believe that the ARB processes improved the design of this building greatly, and I really appreciate their feedback. It's been an iterative process where we're, like I said, trying to balance many, many features. The first design was overly buttressed and hardened, and this one is much more open, glassy, transparent, and really has a great way of touching the street edge at the pedestrian level. And so it's going to be warm toned, it's going to be reflective in places. I think it's going to be a very handsome neighbor, not only to the California Avenue Garage across the street, but also to the Visa Building and the other new buildings in the neighborhood.
So could you walk me through briefly what comments the ARB gave you and how you responded? Because this is your third meeting.
Yes. Well, I can.
It only has 430 pages.
So, thank you for this question. And so this is what we presented back to the ARB the last time I was there. Try a softer, warmer approach. Relocate the staff garage ramp from Birch. We did that. Create a human-scale welcoming presence. We had a two-story entry at the first go-around. Now we have a single story. Integrate the communications tower into the building design. We did that. Use a warmer materials palette. We went from the grays to the warm buffs and the terracottas. Articulate the building form and reduce blockiness. We did that through a series of carving into the form, ins and outs, adding texture, adding color, and adding different features for the window system along the third level. And then surprisingly, and we did this, consider a smaller plaza area. And we had a larger plaza at one point, and how did it get smaller? Well, we addressed one of their other comments, which was to pull the multipurpose room out of the main building form and create a one-story element at the street edge to reduce the scale of the building as you walk by. So in, in a very positive sense, we addressed every one of their comments, and what you see this evening is the manifestation of those points. At the same time, the building is doing a lot of hard work in terms of police operations, survivability, hardening, and things associated with an essential facility.
All right. Thank you.
Tom DeBois.
Yeah, hi. Happy to see us moving forward. I attended a staff briefing on the parking garage. I think that was just last week, and Brad did a great job, I think, and the rest of the staff that was there and answering questions. Question about the police building. In terms of the impact on the tree canopy, I think we're removing trees here. Are we also planting additional trees like we're doing with the garage?
Yes, we are. We're planting many trees. Excuse me. I'm used to a voice-activated mic. Yes, we're, we're replacing all the trees that are removed twofold on the site and elsewhere in the city.
Okay. Yeah, and the ones elsewhere in the city, just a comment for Brad, I know, I noticed we put a lot of them over in, where the Ventura plan is. I think we should just be careful that as we do that specific plan there, we're not planting trees that are going to get removed. Overall, I think the design looks, looks quite good. I'm still concerned about the mass of the antenna itself. And I know last time we came, I think we talked a little bit about was there any option to locate that antenna somewhere else? I'd still like to know if that's an option, and then if we keep it here, I mean, it looks like a pretty ugly cellphone tower. I don't know, was there any discussion to how it could be camouflaged in any way?
So I think you've asked a couple of questions, and Charles Cullen is here. He's our Technical Services Director to first address the need for having it on-site.
Yep.
Charlie.
Mayor Nissen, distinguished council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to describe why the communications tower is a critical component of this building. As you know, we, we share technology with our neighbors in Mountain View and Los Altos, and some of the servers and other equipment reside off-site. So for example, our computer aided dispatch system, those servers are in Mountain View, and we operate it over a microwave network that connects to both Mountain View and Los Altos. We also share a 911 system that we just installed in December of this year. We are a host, so is Los Altos. Mountain View is a remote site, so having the communication capabilities that the tower provides is, is essential, particularly for continuity of operations in a catastrophic event. If you put it at a, another tower or another site, you always run the risk that that tower will fail. It's not built to public safety standards. If there's high voltage lines running on or near it, that could interfere with, excuse me, interfere with radio transmissions or data transmissions. And then the back hall could be severed in the event of an earthquake or other major event. So a communications tower is a critical component of this building. Our neighbors in both Los Altos, Memo Park, and Mountain View all have similar towers, as does San Mateo. We do realize that there is some aesthetic concerns that you brought up, Councilmember DeBois, and we're trying to mitigate those as much as possible. And certainly, I think the architects have done a good job of that. But having it on-site in the event of a critical or a catastrophic event, as long as we have radio communications, we'll be able to provide emergency services even if everything else fails. If we lose radio communications, then essentially we are unable to provide those services to the community.
Okay. No, thanks for making that clear.
Thank you.
So what about camouflaging the antenna in some way?
Well, what's interesting is that we've actually integrated it into the building, and so the overall height of the 135-foot tower isn't expressed just simply as a tower, but it springs from a element that's part of the architecture. So the tower piece itself is much shorter than 135 feet, and we've attempted to do it that way as compared to trying to make it look like a tree or something like that. We're trying to just let it be itself. It's emblematic of exactly what the building does, which it's a communications hub for public safety communications and dispatch, and it really expresses what the building does.
So like looking at Slide 10, I think it is? Is that an accurate depiction, or is that kind of a placeholder of a generic antenna?
It's pretty accurate. If you go to, go back a couple, Brad, please, so you see the back of the building. Keep going the other way, I guess, huh? Nope, there you go. More, more, so there. You can see that the, the pre, the cast concrete element that forms the tower base is actually part of the architecture of the building, and the tower springs from it. So it still is, you know, 60 feet above that, so you are going to see at least that amount of tower.
But yeah, I was talking about kind of the attachments to it. Are there going to be, you know, big dishes, or is it going to be kind of what it looks like in Slide 10?
Yes.
There will be dishes?
There will be dishes on it, and there'll be whip antennas on it.
My last question is, you talked about the nighttime lights, and it's 24/7. Actually, this slide is a good slide. What will the light, like, be to the, actually, stay on that slide you were just on? To the residential buildings that are across the street from this view, I think, on Park?
Well, great question. This will be just like Park is now. It's really going to be treated like a pedestrian street and a main thoroughfare for bikes and things like that, and it's not going to be heavily lit other than what is necessary to provide safety in that area. When I said that the building is going to be softly lit, I showed the, the entry elevation, and that's primarily what I mean.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
So thank you for bringing this forward, and question to the architect and staff. So this is a study session, which I always find a little bit frustrating. So what will you do with our comments tonight?
Well, it does depend upon what they are, and I'm not being cute about that. You know, to what extent are they clearly suggested to be directives versus, you know, just general feedback? So I guess I would say that, you know, we need to, we need to get some clarity from you all when you make your comments, you know, about how pointed they are, and even though the council isn't voting tonight, there is a way to parse out whether or not this is just a individual perspective or something that is more generally shared by the council, and we'll see what, what that is.
Yeah, that's my trouble with study sessions, as you've heard me say over and over and over again, because it's very hard when, you know, three councilmembers speak before anyone else, then they don't have a chance to go back and vote on anything or give an indication if they support or don't support something that somebody else says that they hadn't thought of. So, so I stated it again. So a few things. One is generally, I like the building. Generally, I do. I think there's some really good things about it there, and some of them are like, even the good things, I think, could be better. I'm not an architect, but my background is a lot of design and professional graphic design and student of architecture for many, many years. Other people have heard me say that, but you haven't, just so you have a basis for hearing my comments. There are some things that I think, as I said, are really good. I really like how much open space there is, the plaza space, the wider sidewalks, the accessibility to the site, even though it is a public safety building. The caveat to that is that it's a lot of hardscape. It's an awful lot of hardscape. So I don't know what you could do to soften that, but it's a lot of heat I see and a lot of impermeability that I see. So that's, that's a concern I have for environmental reasons and for heat reasons, and, and just for making it a more appealing, approachable kind of, kind of building. The step downs, I really do appreciate. I have questions about, and I'm, well, the slide that's up on this, no, the slide that's on the screen doesn't show up, but there are some parts of the building that look like they are soft stories. And so did the ARB comment on that? Looks like there are some second-story portions of the building that are just supported by poles. What would keep that from being considered a soft-story building?
This is not a soft-story building, and actually it's, involves state-of-the-art seismic engineering to meet essential facility standards. And the elements that you see that may appear to be soft-story are probably, I don't know exactly which ones you are referring to.
Yes.
Ah ha. At the entry, there is a, a architectural feature where the single-story canopy wraps around, and there is a wing wall supporting that.
Pardon? There was another one. No, not that one. There was another. So what you're telling me, if we can try to cut to the chase, or what you're telling me is that what appears, what is the appearance of being a soft story, actually, those aren't particular structural elements because the rest of the building is engineered in such a way that, is that what you're telling me?
Exactly. And the, the fact that you're aware and observant of potential soft stories is really an important definer of these types of buildings. They're really designed to be extremely robust and available for immediate occupancy following a major earthquake, and that's what this is being designed towards.
Okay. On Slide 22, on the second, on the third story, actually, it talks about, it indicates a reflective white porcelain tile. And why reflective? It seems like that would also, again, well, go ahead.
Let's change the word reflective. It's going to have a glossy white finish that is similar in terms of reflectivity as the glass around it. And so we were trying to create a commonality of experience in that band. But in particular, the California Avenue Garage across the way has a mixture of tiles, of honed polish and, and textured tiles that forms the specularity as you go up the stairs of, and difference in light. And we wanted to have some sense of commonality with the garage tile wall, and so we introduced it here. Importantly, behind that white is the, the issue. Behind the white is the Emergency Operations Center, which is not really a window-rich environment. And so we were trying to find another facade type that could be common with the glass and have the right sense in that band up there.
So I still don't find, I don't think that, find that to be a positive element. I truly don't, and I don't think it's going to be well-received by the public. When you say it's the same surface sort of, I don't remember how you, it's basically reflective.
It's, it's a white porcelain tile with a gloss glaze on it.
Yeah, similar to the windows. Well, windows are reflective.
They are.
Yes. So I just, I do not see this going as being... So I just, I do not see this going as being popular with the public. And perhaps you'd reconsider to not having such a, the word up here, reflective, or such a glossy kind of finish there. I don't know if the ARB had other comments about that, but it's, and especially at it being at the third level, where it'll catch the sun even more.
Well.
And I know there's some overhang there, but not that much.
I think that actually, it's going to be reflecting some of the cityscape back to the viewer, that you're going to see faint reflections of the environment around it. And by reflective, that's what I mean, not reflecting sunlight or something like that because it's under a broad-hanging roof. So I certainly understand the issue that, and your thoughts about this, and we will carry it forward and discuss it with the ARB.
I'd really appreciate that because even the fact that it's white porcelain tile, it's, you know, that's what we use in kitchens and bathrooms and stuff, and it is, it does have an element of reflectivity of it, to it, so.
Point well taken.
I really hope you'll take another look at that. I had a question about, and I won't be terribly long here, but I do have a question about, and actually, the slide that's up here is fine. The windows that are on the top floor on the left end of the building, the verticals in the windows, it's obvious those are part of the windows. The horizontals, it's really hard to tell if those are structured, if those are design elements, or if those are shades on the inside, it's hard to tell what those are.
They are, great eye. Those are aluminum airfoil privacy screens that you can turn like large plantation shutters to provide privacy and glare control in those offices.
And any ventilation?
No ventilation through those windows.
Is there any ventilation in any of the windows?
There, none of the windows are operable except in the break room areas and places like that.
Okay. And then I think probably two last questions. One is, I think it was Slide, I'll find it here in a second, Slide 11, excuse me, I'm sorry, Slide 13, I'm looking at 13 and saying 11. Slide 13. I hope the ARB, and you will take this up, because that is really, even though it has plantings there that soften it, it is still, I think, a very off-putting, unfriendly facade. I think there are a lot of areas of the building that are very successful overall. I think the form of the building is very successful. So I'm not going to comment on everything that I really do like, but this is one area where I really think it's pretty off-putting, and there's no, there's no break in this long, whatever that is, terracotta tile, or whatever that is, or brick facade.
It's board-form concrete. Well, remember what we're doing is, we're building on top of the lid of a operational garage. And so landscaping is a thorny issue, so to speak. And so what we've created is a series of deep planting wells, and that's what you see the runner running past, and where we are able to get larger statured trees by having deeper soil zones. And then behind these planting areas, you see the operational yard and the accessory buildings that are being screened by these plantings. This is a necessary feature, this surface parking area and staging area for vehicles that are being screened by this wall, and we're attempting to do it through landscape and seating.
I understand the question related to that is, where's the public art on this building? And I was thinking this would have been a great opportunity to incorporate public art to make this more accessible to the public. Where is the public art on this building?
So I think we're still in discussions with the artist. We're working collaboratively with the architect and the artist, and he's in the midst of identifying locations where he would prefer to place art. So we can certainly suggest this location.
Okay. And there may be others, but this is one that really screams out to me. And you also point out something, though, is I've always felt like the artist ought to be incorporated into the design of the building and not the art being applied somewhere.
They are working together.
Okay, all right, good, good to know. So then my last comment is, so you have at least two of us saying this, at least two of us. It's the communications tower. And, you know, we have a public that really has responded very negatively to the, even the cellphone towers and what they look like. I think Palo Alto, as a city, could set a better example and should set the standard for good design. And, you know, we have, you know, communications boxes that are on the ground, and sometimes they're painted and, you know, all kinds of ways that they are made much more attractive. And I think surely there is a way, and maybe it's with the art commissioner, maybe it's with some engineer, IDEO, or whoever, but I think the necessary equipment here doesn't have to look like it's a bunch of coat hangers, you know, that are wrapped around a pole. And I'm being facetious there, of course, but I don't think it has to look like this. I truly don't. I've never been convinced that they have to have the kind of physical appearance that they do to be functioning and high-performing in our community. And I think if the city doesn't set a high standard and a high example, I don't know where we will look. The community is not going to respond well to this either. I know it's not your fault, you're doing what you're trying to do to incorporate here, but it's hard to imagine there are other forms that this could take and accomplish the same task and be more artful in its issuance of that service.
Councilmember Holman?
Strong, strong comment on that.
Just been through this a couple of times in former lives. Are you, are we separating the pole from the attachments? You know, because that seems a little bit more possible to me than the idea of a disappearing pole.
Yes, I am definitely separating the attachments from the pole. The pole itself can be just a clean vertical line. It's the attachments, and I think if we don't set a better standard for what the things are that go on it, we're missing the boat, disappointing the public, and not performing the service that we should. My opinion. That said, but I think what you've shown, though, are indicative of what would be attached to the pole, if I understood correctly, so, yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, so I'm asking us to do better.
And duly noted, I understand the challenges associated with designing, and we will work with the communications team and Charlie and the police department to try to design an antenna array that is pleasing as we possibly can.
With all due respect, I'm not sure that's where you're going to get better design.
Yeah, we understand the potential to expand the perspectives.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. Okay, Councilmember Walbach, Koo, and then Adrian Fine.
Something that I've been bringing up more and more when we're talking about parking, and I think it's particularly appropriate for a public safety building. How many motorcycle parking spots are there here? Or is there flexibility to add more later? And I know we only have one motor officer right now, but hopefully we'll have one in the future.
There's seven motorcycle spaces.
Okay.
Yes.
You might want to think about upping that a little bit, but I'll let you use your best judgment. And do you remember how many there are in the adjacent new parking garage? I know we're not really reviewing that one as much, but it's an accompanying project, so I just figured I'd ask.
We didn't have any designated spaces when we came to you and brought the garage, but we discussed this at the meeting, and we will be including spaces. I don't think we have a defined number yet.
Okay, great. And I encourage making sure that at least there's capacity for electric charging for, for as many vehicles as possible, because we want this to be future-proof, and I would make sure to consider that, including for two-wheeled vehicles, because there will be, I think, a lot more of those as we go forward, especially as we think about our 80-by-30 goal and our desire to be as green as possible in Palo Alto. So as far as the antenna, I guess I have a slightly different starting point, which is to say that this is a public safety building. Its number-one function is function, and the form has to follow function when we're talking about a public safety building. I think that the form here is pretty good. I've seen some other ways to camouflage antennas, and they're pretty ugly for the most part. Actually, I don't know if I've ever seen one that I didn't think was ugly. The fake trees are a common one. Also, the more we do to camouflage it, the larger the item will be, and it will stand out more, it'll strike more of the sky, be visible from further away. So I guess my preference would just be to keep it as simple, clean, minimal as possible. Obviously, you know, views vary among the councilmembers. I think views will vary among the public. But unless there is, you know, some really different option that's out there, you know, I'd say just keep it simple, have an antenna. You know, it's an antenna, it's going to look like an antenna, and a fake tree of that height would not, in my view, be an aesthetic improvement. But I'm not a designer, and I'm not an architect, so what do I know?
Lady is next. Councilmember Koo.
So with the new building, you're still going to go into finances after this, right, Brad? Okay. So with the new building, is the mobile emergency operations vehicle going to be able to be parked over there, or is it still going to be parked in the, on some other facility? Have you made space for it?
So I think the idea is that there will be hookups and the ability to come set up and be deployed there, but it won't live there permanently.
So when it's deployed there, will it have its own parking spot, or is it going to be out on the street like how it is here?
So what we've done on the Sherman side for the large fire trucks is we've done a cutout area, which it could certainly fit into that cutout area, or it could fit back around temporarily on the Jacaranda side if we just needed to stop by for a little bit. But we do not intend to close Jacaranda at all.
Nor the other streets when it's parked out in the cutout.
No, the street would not be closed, it would be a cutout.
Now, the antenna that is going up on top of this building, is there radiation or whatever the terms are?
That's probably a Charlie question.
Charlie.
These are just normal radio transmissions, and unlike a cellphone, which is in your pocket and very close to you, which raises some concerns, and I know has, this will be up at 135 feet, so very minimal exposure at all. And while I have the opportunity to address Councilmember Holman's desire for a more aesthetically pleasing equipment on the tower, we may be able to look at some lower-profile antennas, possibly try to size the microwave dishes as small as possible. We do have some very smart and well-informed radio consultants that we'll talk to about what we could do to minimize the impact, certainly. Thank you.
For now, that's all I have. I have more on the finance. Councilmember Fine, I believe you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for bringing this tonight. Just a few short comments. So one, if I read the plan on page 20 correctly, might I understand there are only bicycle parking racks on Park Boulevard?
There's also bicycle parking in front of the building, and then we have a bicycle repair station on the corner of Park and Jacaranda that we've installed.
Okay. I guess I would just encourage us, at least in, I think, many of Palo Alto's public spaces, there's not enough bike parking, and it's often oversubscribed, so please do consider that. On the issue of the communications tower, I also believe this is more of a functional thing than a form issue, so my opinion is let the function drive the form there. And then I guess just my last major thing is, this building seems nice enough, but it doesn't really say to me anything about like a civic identity or it being a public safety building. And I know that's an issue. Some people do want it to look like this, some people don't want it to look like that. My preference is I'm often impressed, a little esteemed, and it can be nice to walk into a building that does have a little bit of a nice civic identity unless people know they're entering a important public space. So if there are ways emblematically or design-wise to do that on this building, I would appreciate that, and otherwise, I think it's got some promise, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. I have a question. In terms of the Mobile Emergency Operations Center, can you talk about, you know, what its role is in terms of like 911 and making sure that if there's emergency, things are, you know, the community is going to be safe?
I'm going to ask Charlie to come up, that's his expertise.
Thank you, I probably should have sat in the front row. Councilmember Tanaka, the Mobile EOC is used for a variety of purposes and can serve as a 911 center. In fact, it did recently when we remodeled the 911 center, put in new carpeting, and added a new 911 system. We operated out of the Mobile EOC for two weeks plus. We've also supported other agencies, including Los Altos, when they had to do some renovations. So yes, it provides an alternate PSAP and can provide a command, a mobile command center for major police incidents. Ken Duker and his staff have done a great job outfitting it with some very sophisticated technology, both on the radio side and on the data side, that allow us to communicate in the event of a catastrophic event where other communications are not available to us. So that really is a great, the redundancy that it provides for us is outstanding. And while we now operate in conjunction with Mountain View in Los Altos, it is a fourth component to our ability to respond to emergencies during a catastrophic event.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that the community knows that 911 services are going to be safe when we have this asset in the community. I remember in 2010, when we bought it, it was promised that it would provide that kind of 911 support in terms of emergencies and, you know, disasters and whatnot. And so I want to make sure that's there, because I know that in terms of the new public safety, it was going to take a while for us to get built still. And so I just want to make sure the community knows it's safe while this is in place.
Absolutely, and we recently operated as a 911 center.
Yeah, and so there's nothing they should worry about in terms of a dire, you know, 911 outage in the meantime, while we have this capability.
We would have the capability of operating out of the mobile command vehicle if there was a failure for some reason in our communication center.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that that's well-known, because some ballot managers don't quite reflect that. But my second question is more of an architectural one, which is, I noticed that, you know, one part of the building is a little bit high, another part of the building is kind of low, just kind of like a cap to the parking lot. And so one thing I wanted to ask is, I'm not sure if you guys have ever been to Yerba Buena Gardens in San Francisco, but in Yerba Buena, they have like a rooftop garden, so they turn it into kind of like a public space. And so I wonder, was that contemplated? Is it possible? I mean, it looks like it's pretty, I think you guys, it looked like you took a lot of the equipment off the roof already. Is it possible to make that a rooftop garden, a community space that the community could enjoy? Or is there a safety concern that someone planted a bomb on there? I mean, what's the thus behind that?
What you describe is actually a really wonderful urban design move that happens in many cities, but typically not in their police stations, for security reasons. We did that actually in this design, and where? We did it on the roof of the garage. So the entire ground plane is actually a roof garden that a public safety building is embedded inside of. And one of the key programmatic and operational design moves that we made is that we created a lot, or provided for the busyness of the police station to happen underground. And what is that? The staging of vehicles, dropping off of suspects, processing of evidence, things that are very car-heavy, and switching from one vehicle to the next. All of that happens in the basement garage levels, which is really a key feature of police stations. Police stations, in a way, are sort of like motherships for cars. And so having these operational basement levels quiets the street plane and puts it underground. And so that was one of the design features that we thought of from the very get-go.
Can you turn to Slide 14, please? So it looks like it's just a flat roof, nothing going on there. I mean, is that, is that what you're talking about? Because what I was referring to, because it's kind of a basement cover, could that space above there not be recovered for public use, like a plaza or some sort of garden? Like, kind of like how Yerba Buena has like the stairs or steps that walk up to it, because it's not a very high roof, it's more of a cover for basement?
The answer is yes. What you're looking at is the What you're looking at is the single-story roof canopy that hides the large vehicles and that is to preserve the view from the residences across the street, so they're not looking down at a bunch of light bars and, and things like this in these oversized vehicles. And so if a, a living roof was introduced, this would be the location that you would do that.
Okay, so is it possible or is it just prohibitively expensive or danger?
It's, it's possible, it's just, it's a cost, that's all.
Okay.
So I want to go to Brad Eccleston because we had a conversation this morning that dealt with a different aspect of this. So Brad, why don't you make your presentation and there probably will be some other questions from my colleagues.
Right, thank you, Mayor. So it's a lot more fun, I think, to talk about the design. But are we sort of finished?
More realistic to talk about this.
Are we sort of finished with the design piece, is that your thinking?
I don't see another lights.
Okay. I just would like to repeat something that was sort of said in, in the response and it's back to councilmember Holman's initial question about a study session. I think all of these comments for the most part are, is information that we can carry forward, as was pointed out, to the A R B or to the, to the artists working on the project or otherwise. And so there's the potential to both inform their final conversations and we may get feedback from them on that. And then I just would remind the council, when we're all finished with this, this study session, finished with the A R B, our plan is ultimately to try to get back to the council, say by the end of the November meeting, with an actual sort of, you know, decision meeting for the council on the project itself. So the council will again then have opportunities to, to make directive comments and those sorts of things, you know, as we go forward. And that'll be pretty closely followed on where we are right now. Thanks. Good, Brad.
So to move on to the costs, this slide highlights the increases in the public safety building costs that have occurred over time. I think we've been discussing this at various times with the council over the last few years, but I just wanted to kind of, to reiterate this and make sure we're, we're all familiar as we discuss this. So that initial 2012 figure of 57 million was really a very rough planning level figure. At the time, it even included funding to buy land, which obviously we're not having to do here. But one of the key things that it did not account for, there were several things it didn't account for, but it did not account in any way for cost escalation that's occurred. The 2016 estimate was based on some very simple conceptual plans that we were looking at at that time. It's better started to account for all of the costs in the project, including escalation to the midpoint of construction, which is a really important factor in these cost estimates. Then about a year ago, when we were at the 50% schematic design level, we were at the $91 million cost estimate. And I think that's the last one that we'd been discussing with the council and finance committee over the course of the first half of 2018, in the context of the infrastructure plan. So since then, we've had increases, they've come primarily from requests from the A R B that, as Michael Ross said, we feel actually have made some important improvements to the project. Also, the inclusion of cutoff walls in the project to minimize dewatering. Otherwise, in, in this location, we'd be doing a lot of dewatering and in an area where the groundwater is somewhat contaminated. And then a, a key thing, which we'll, we'll touch on again a little more in a second, is adding a design contingency to the project that accounts for additional increases that we would expect to see. So this slide also lists some of the overall key factors. I already mentioned the A R B, cost escalation, but then also very important in this project and especially if you're trying to compare it to other like projects, is the fact that we have these large underground basement levels because of the constrained site. And we think that overall those, those levels add about $25 million to the cost of the So this is kind of a summary table that, that tries to break out what the major elements are of that $106 million cost estimate that we're looking at now. So there's really two key points here. One is that we've accounted for the expected additional cost escalation through the spring of 2022. These are, these are key points that I'm wanting to make about essentially why we're not expecting this trend of just the kind of ever-increasing cost to continue. So we've captured the cost escalation through the spring of 2022. And then if you look in the table, you see the design contingency I mentioned. So essentially, we've built in $7 million into that $106 million estimate as a contingency against, as we continue the design process and more complexity is added that's not present in the plans right now, when the cost estimators look at it, we hope to already be accounting for that. So, I mean, I just point out, although we can't ever be certain about the cost for a project until we have bids and the project is kind of underway and being successful, we do feel that on this, with this estimate now, that we've captured all the relevant costs and are not expecting any significant changes. So this slide didn't come out just right, but I wanted to try to put this cost increase in the perspective of the discussions we've been having with council and the finance committee over the last six months and in the context of the rest of the infrastructure plan. So this slide's a little complicated, but I'll try to walk through it fairly slowly and hopefully it'll make sense. So you see those three boxes on the top there. The first one on the left is our overall general fund capital improvement program for the city. So that's the entire C I P for the general fund. So for the five-year plan that was just adopted for fiscal years 19 through 23, you'll see there's a total of $356 million in the whole five-year plan, with 133 million of that in our current fiscal year 19. Then we have the nine 2014 council infrastructure plan projects that are in the middle box. Those are a subset of that entire, the general fund C I P that was on the left. So in the fiscal year 18 to 2022 plan, a year ago, we had cost estimates for the infrastructure plan projects of $180 million. And at those cost estimates, they were fully funded in the, the capital budget and the five-year plan. Now with all the updates that have occurred since then, I think most of which we discussed with the council and then were referred to finance committee, but now also including what we're talking about tonight, the revised total is 265 million as compared to that 180 million. Now, I want to talk a little bit about that, but before coming back, the third category on the right is the other projects outside of the infrastructure plan that don't have funding either within the general fund, C I P, or the infrastructure plan. And those are things like the J M Z Phase Two project, rebuilding the animal shelter, implementation of the Parks Master Plan. And we've kind of roughly estimated and had talked about with the finance committee that we think those three things are about 55 to 65 million. So again, no funding for those projects currently. So coming back to the infrastructure plan, the kind of box below tries to show the math of, of sort of where we're at right now to get a, a current gap that we can wrap our arms around. So the difference between the 180 million that was budgeted a year ago and the 265 that we currently have is $85 million, so that's kind of a, a starting gap. But then we've talked about that, that there were some funding sources available that, that could be used towards the gap. So the first of that is fund balance in the capital improvement fund and, and we're showing that here as $28 million. There are also $6 million available in some other smaller sources like, and some of which have to be dedicated to specific projects, like funding for, from Innu parking fees and Charleston Arrosadero Impact Fee Fund and then also some S B one funding. So that's the 6 million. Then we've got this $35 million. If we assume that the, the new San Antonio Marriott Hotels come online and that's anticipated for 2020, the projected revenue could be leveraged for about $35 million through certificates of participation. So if you were to assume that we, we used all those things towards this gap, where that leaves us at is still having a gap of $16 million. And then the last bit of nuance I'd, I'd add to that is that, well, for one thing, that doesn't leave us anything with any contingency for any other increases. And while we're not expecting significant increases to these big projects like the public safety building and the Calav garage, one example would be Fire Station Four. It's much smaller, but we, we haven't brought that estimate up to date and it probably would have some increase. And then I, I just say, so we've got that $16 million. There's the T O T measure for November. If that were to pass, we've discussed that that could potentially raise about $25 million. If that didn't happen, then the alternative would be that we'd be looking at the, the overall general fund C I P where we spend something like $20 million a year on projects and be looking to reprioritize within that general fund C I P.
So, do you have something else on that?
No.
So before we leave that, I, I think it's worthwhile, let's just repeat this a little bit, I think, this, does the council have this hand, as a handout also? Okay. I think it's a pretty helpful map of the, the world. Again, on the left side is our capital improvement program that we adopt anew every, anew every five years. The actual appropriated portion is the first year, which in this case is fiscal year 2019. And this is the mix of projects and it's sometimes it's a grab bag of projects. And while the current C I P recommends all of those projects for funding, of which a significant amount of the funding in here is related to the $180 million council infrastructure piece, right? These, these projects are not absolutely set in stone. I mean, there is always the ability to review them when we review the C I P if there are funding challenges that the council faces in the future. So these are, I mean, some, there are discretionary projects in, to some degree, within that capital improvement program each year. Going to the council infrastructure plan again, I, I think it's really worth restating, the city has made a concentrated, determined effort to make this the central infrastructure investments and to be sure that we would fund those over the past, actually more than four years, because there were several years of community involvement, as was indicated, and council discussions about that combination of projects. And that's why we did focus on what it takes to close that funding, funding gap, which if the T O T passes, obviously allows us to do that. And it presumes also that our adopted C I P through 2023 is, is able to move forward itself as, as planned. There are two projects in particular within that group that we have not, obviously, started to the same degree as the, the key driving projects, of course, by scale of the public safety building and the garage that we're looking at here on California Avenue. But we have not started even the design work really in, in any way on, on Fire Station Four. And while we've done some, we've done preliminary designs on the downtown garage, that is still a project that is subject to council's review going forward. And then again, just to restate, these unfunded projects, I think are more accurately expressed as emergent but known possible projects that have arisen, you know, over the past year or two. Gap funding for the J M Z, you had detailed discussions on the animal shelter and about $40 million out of this 55 to 65 million is the estimate that we did after the, as part of the council's adoption of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So this is more to show that there are plenty of infrastructure demands on existing and potential revenue sources for the council to be considering. Thanks.
Okay, I, I really appreciate this. Several times in the past, councilmembers Holman and Koo have both asked for some indication of exactly where we are on our, with our income stream. As you look at this, it's, it's really quite striking to see that we're at 265 for our infrastructure plan. But also, while I hesitate to quote it, we have heard an astonishing figure of how quickly the costs to build are going up. And I won't quote it for, because I don't have that reference, but it, it really is an amount that means that for every month or two that we lose, we are once again going to have to spend more.
Madam-
It's a hard place to, to find construction workers, it's difficult. The, the cost of the materials is going up almost by the day.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I neglected to dive a little deeper on one of the sort of funding gap strategies and that's this fund balance piece. I did just want to clarify, this $28 million fund balance, this isn't so much us taking from existing fund balance for other purposes. This is more of an assessment of what we would expect to typically be receiving over this, this period of time through 2022. Yeah, at the end of each year, we've been making contributions to the Infrastructure Reserve Fund each year and this would just anticipate, this total of $28 million would anticipate under sort of our kind of current trends and practices, that we would just be dedicating or earmarking that funding for each of these years through 2022 to go to the infrastructure plan. Thanks.
Okay, with that, two lights from councilmember Walbach and Scharf.
Yeah, and just so we're clear, there's, there's some more background on both funding and costs, on the cost side of the public safety building in particular, that Brad has as his presentation. So you need to decide if this is the time for councilmember questions or do we continue on?
You've been requested to finish that off before we go to the council.
Okay, all right, great. Brad?
Sure.
Yeah, we're almost done.
Yes. So I, I did want to touch a little bit on the topic of value engineering as well while we're looking at these increased costs. And that's definitely been part of the project design process and, and something that's, that stopped the cost from being even higher than what we're presenting today. And just to point out, those efforts have been primarily focused on architectural aspects of the project that we thought added cost while being careful to limit making changes to anything that impacts operations and security of the public safety building. So this slide lists a few examples of things where changes were made, a basement level reduced footprint and some changes to the skylight in atrium, reductions in glass in some areas that reduce some costs. There's a number of other items, not all of them are, are hugely significant, but I just wanted to express that that has been part of the process. So, and this was discussed in the staff report, one significant idea that staff has been considering, and I think was mentioned when we came to you in June, was the potential of whether we could consolidate the two basement levels for the public safety building into one larger basement level. And we had done some preliminary work that indicated we, we might save $10 million approximately by doing that. So one immediate concern with that idea is that the second basement level, its primary function is to provide parking for the public safety building staff. 98 parking spaces. So essentially, one aspect of that would be if we were to do it, we'd be shifting all that employee parking over to the new Calav garage, which in essence would have the impact of, of using up one of the levels of the garage. We've already been to council once where we proposed that idea in January and that was not approved. So that was one- So that was one aspect, but we also wanted as as part of considering that to look at, would there be any operational impacts on the public safety building function? And we worked closely with Patty and the rest of the team, and they had a lot of concerns about the the kind of preliminary design that we put together that that could potentially allow us to do that. So I want to just quickly show you the the couple ideas here for the garages and and then let Patty speak a little to that. So this slide, this slide and the next slide show our our two basement configuration that's part of the project design currently and that's included in the $106 million project cost estimate. So this first level is dedicated to patrol operations and there's a lot of parking, but wherever you see colored spaces, those are those are part of the operations areas, the program area of the public safety building. And then here's the second basement level for for the design. You'll see here that there's still some program area, but it's much less and it's much more dedicated to parking. So this is the area where I was mentioning that staff would park in the public safety building.
Before we move on, I just like to say that I was I've been a big proponent of cutting out the second floor. I've really pushed the staff really hard on it. For example, when you look at that, the scheme for the second floor, primarily for staff private vehicle parking, it looked to me like, wow, it should be pretty darn simple for us to ship that somehow over to the other garage and save that $10 million. The second level not only is just a whole other cost, I think we kick into the cutoff wall requirement with our new focus on de-watering when we're doing projects and that sort of thing. So I really thought, you know, I had a winner with the staff and then they came back with what it would take for us to make that adjustment. Do you have that slide?
So I'll show this just for a second because I think Patty has another slide she's going to speak from, but this was our preliminary design of a single basement level. It actually extends out farther and goes under the sidewalk of Park even to be able to fit this. But I guess the point I want to make, and we can come back to it if council members would like to look at it, but you can see that it's much more constrained and has the general look of things being pushed into that space. And so I'll let Patty speak to the police department concerns.
Thanks, Brad, and I'll be as concise as possible and try to present a couple bullet points. So I think staff very heroically tried to condense the two basements into one basement level. And if you just take a look at the previous slide, it's very, very busy. And the entire concept of designing this building on this constrained site was that we wanted an operational basement. That's the first basement level. And what what does that mean? So that means that everything patrol related, that's really where our city functions. They cruise down there, they go to holding, they drop off some information, they have their patrol cars, they load up their gear. That's all patrol operations. We did not want staff cars, undercover cars, other city employees interacting and interfering with that traffic down there. So that's kind of our primary concern. So when we go to the one basement level, one of the things right off the bat is it severely narrows the drive aisles. Some drive aisles go from 24 feet with the two basement concept, two-way, down to about 10 feet in one-way traffic. So we're really concerned about things like turning radius and those things getting, you know, down the ramp and now having to go the entire length of the block kind of one-way versus before you could just flip around and go back the other direction and get out of there. So operationally, there's been some impacts. It also creates, as I mentioned, an overlap between people in custody and regular staff. So if you're a fire admin support person and you're coming down into this level, you're now potentially interacting with the patrol functions and anyone who, you know, may be down there as well. It brings up a lot of the program space up into B one and also up into the building, which will have some constraints on the design. We talked initially, it's not in this plan yet, but we talked about locating the server room all the way downstairs in B two so that it's protected, it's environmentally controlled and functions such as that. If you look at the one level basement plan, some of the actual doorways and access sites are only accessible from drive aisles. So literally a patrol car could be driving in down the ramp and you're there trying to get your gear or do whatever to some of these building of these rooms, and there's that conflict. We feel that the constrained site with one basement level might limit our opportunity for, we've been talking with Tesla quite a bit and other manufacturers about backup emergency power, electric vehicle charging, and we don't know yet what that impact will have on these parking spaces down here. So that's that's one concern. And we really think, you know, similar to this building, when we moved in, they were almost outgrown and the intent was to expand the mezzanine. So having two levels of basement allows us growth and it's definitely there is basement, sorry, there is program space already down in B one. So that area could be repurposed if the need came up or used for other purposes. So hopefully that's addressed a few of the considerations if you have additional questions.
And I would just add, I mean, restating the obvious that, you know, this is a building for generations. I mean, the existing public safety space is 48 years old, right? Almost 50 years old. So at a minimum, this is a 50-year building and could very much be considerably more than that. So we've got to think about Palo Alto 50 years from now also. And, you know, the constraints that that the footprint itself and the height, the mass of the building and the amount of space we have in the in the understory, really, in my view, makes the case that we should make the investment, you know, now on both levels, even though I really, I was really upset with this outcome, so.
So last, last slide, just to touch briefly on schedule. So I think we mentioned we're out to bid tomorrow on the Calav garage. We plan to bring the construction contract to council for approval before the end of the year and break ground in January. When that project's done in mid 2020, we the plan is to immediately break ground on the public safety building and have that completed about at the end of 2021 with a move in at the beginning of 2022. The mayor mentioned the figure we keep talking about, about construction cost escalation for the public safety building. It's $350,000 a month, which is why we feel it's so important to keep this on schedule and make sure we actually complete the garage project on time and that we're ready to begin the public safety building as soon as possible afterward.
So we are, as we've said earlier, this is a study session. We're not making any motions tonight. At the same time, I would urge all of us to realize how long this has been underway. It's now going to A R B for the third time. It is going out to bid tomorrow. So while, as Karen said earlier, what are you going to do with these comments? We'll take some back to A R B. But for the most part, spending at 350, $350,000 a month, I think that's rather sobering and it's time to really get started. Two comments, Corey and Greg.
Thank you for the update on the cost of this. So the A R B cost to the city, you indicated was four to five million. Is that because they added four to five million in design? Or is that because it costs in features? Or was it four to five million in additional design time for the architect? Where did that four to five million come from?
It's four to five million dollars in what we're estimating for the construction costs for the design features that were added.
So the A R B added four to five million dollars of design features?
That's our estimate.
Plus additional time for in design. And how many, how many months of delay do you think resulted from the A R B's work on this?
I wouldn't say we've got any delay from the A R B on the public safety building because because of the construction of the garage, we had some extra time to be able to complete that design. We did have some, we had float time in there at first where we were going to finish the design of the public safety building sometime before the garage would be complete. So kind of where we are now is that as long as we get that approval from them now, we're fine and we can just continue on with the design process as we have it scheduled and have plenty of time to to get out to bid and start on time.
Well, that's good to hear. I really do value the work that the A R B does and I think that they've helped improve this project, so I don't want to discount that. But I want us as an organization to be very sensitive to the time delays in construction costs. I mean, we hear it from everybody, you know, if somebody is redevelop or redesigning their house or putting solar panels on their roof, even an individual homeowner in Palo Alto, we know that the Palo Alto process adds a tremendous amount to the cost. And hopefully this is a wake-up call for the city when it's costing us, you know, millions of dollars in in to go through the process. So I'm, just to move on from that, looking at this infrastructure funding gap where we are, I mean, it's nice that we're able to bring it down to 16 million, but we are really pulling funds from a lot of places to get it down to 16 million. And that those funds could be used other places. Those could be used on the J M Z Phase Two, on the animal shelter, on parks, on helping fund affordable housing. You know, there's a lot of other places that money could be going if it wasn't going to all this. So I think I've mentioned it before, but you know, it's actually really handy on slide 26, if you go back to slide 26. It's handy, you've got these cute little logos for each of our infrastructure items. And at the far right, the last two are Fire Station Number Three and Fire Station Number Four. I don't think any of us is willing to forego those projects. Fire Station Three is actually going up already. Fire Station Four, phrase I heard from the chief is it does not meet our current mission, our mission needs. So, and sorry if I botched that quote. Public safety building we're talking about, that's got to move forward. We've got a couple items here that are about bike and pedestrian safety. I think we all value that. Bixby Park, I don't think any of us is going to skip that one. And then, actually, most of the works, a lot of that's been done already. California Avenue Garage, some of us wanted to downsize that one. And also, if you look at the the picture of the new garage next to the public safety building, the new garage actually dwarfs the new public safety building. And, you know, people say that you can tell what are the values and the who has the most power in a society by looking at the tallest buildings in their cities. You know, so in some Western countries, the tallest buildings, especially following time, were churches. Now it's often banks. Here, we're making our parking garage bigger in some ways than our public safety building. So it tells you where our priorities are. Our priorities are for cars more than public safety, more than for housing, more than for retail. And so the last item on there is the downtown garage. And I am never going to vote for that garage. I'm just not going to do it. Now, maybe I won't be here after next year and I won't get a chance to vote against it, but I'll come and use my two minutes in that case. I'm never going to vote for that garage. It's a parking lot across the street from the, from the post office. You know, frankly, what we should have there is affordable housing. If we're going to do anything on that site, it should be affordable housing. You know, we could pay for the whole thing ourselves for the cost of doing that garage. I'd rather house people than house cars. You know, if somebody wants to build a garage in downtown, they can pay for it, but I don't think we need to pay for it. I've said it before and I will keep saying it until we've taken it off the list.
So, a couple things. I just wanted to say, you know, this really has been a decades-long quest for the new public safety building. People have been talking about this since I joined the council in 2010. There were all sorts of plans that, for whatever reason, never came to fruition because something always came up. You asked what to do with our comments tonight. I think I would strongly say move forward and get this done. Go get your approvals at the A R B tomorrow, be done with this, bid it out and get it done as quickly as possible. And let's not fall behind the schedule at 350,000 a month. I think that's really important. I wanted to thank the city manager and staff. I know you guys worked really hard to try and value engineer this. And I'm really glad you came to looking at this and saying, we don't want to sacrifice straight out of the box for something that's going to last us 50 years. And I think that's the right decision. I don't think you want to be the old saying, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, and that that seems to fit this this really well. So I'm hopeful that we move as quickly as forward, as quickly as possible. And, you know, I look forward to having a new public safety building there. And I know, I know after, the first thing the the police did was take me on a tour and show me the state of their their evidence lockers, the way the whole thing was and that. And, you know, it's funny, because when I first joined the council, I wasn't sure I actually thought we needed a new public safety building. It was one of those things in the community people talked about. Did we really need it? It seemed fine to me over there, but when you toured it and you actually saw it, it became strikingly obvious that we need this. And so, you know, I also wanted to say that this has actually been a community effort by so many council members over the years. And, you know, we're just finally got this in grasp. So let's go finally do it and get the community a new public safety building. Thank you.
So thanks, everyone. I think the sobering thought is 350,000 a month. Four million a year adds up in a hurry. So I I think we're ready and, sorry, Tom, I just saw your light going. Tom and then Lydia.
Thanks, Liz. So Brad, I'll try not to hold it to you, but I think I heard you say 106 million, not expecting significant changes. So if I understand it right, we're saying we don't have a gap if we pass the new T O T, which is the whole reason we have the new T O T on the ballot, right?
If if the T O T passes and we ultimately decide to program those other funding sources that we showed on the slide into these projects.
Yeah, yeah, that's going to be tight, tight is what I heard. So I think there's probably differing opinions on the council in terms of the infrastructure plan. I do think we've promised the voters this infrastructure plan. I think in the T O T ballot arguments that most of the council signed, we listed these projects, including the two garages. And, you know, I think we've made a commitment and that's why we're going to the ballot. On terms of the unfunded projects, I really think we need to add coverly to that list and we should start, we should start to track it. And then just the last thing I want to say is just looking at this area and again, thinking about our specific plan we're working on, we are going to really strain this neighborhood. We're going to be hauling out a ton of dirt. It's going to be a lot of large trucks and construction noise for quite some time. So, and there's a lot of residential buildings there, including senior PCs, PC zoning buildings right along Page Mill. So I think we really need to start to think about how these public and private projects are going to interact. When we're looking, if we're looking at approving new projects in this area, I think we need to be careful. And I know, I think, Brad, you are looking at truck routes and construction hours and all of that stuff, but it just seems like, you know, it's going to be really hard on people living around this stuff for a number of years. And I do see a lot of things happening over where we are planning our specific plan and I wonder at some point if we should consider a moratorium in that area because it's it's kind of being pre-built before we determine what our specific plan is. So it's a little, a little off topic, but there's a lot of construction and and just a few blocks going on. So, thanks.
So, Member Koo.
In on your page, on the slide where you have the cost estimate, that includes all the staff time, staff work on this, right?
This, this estimate does not include the staff time. The 106 million does not.
106 does not?
The project, the staff cost of the projects?
It's not in the 106 million. It's it's in the larger numbers that we talked about for the CIP.
The 223 or 180?
The the 265 figure on slide 27.
Oh, so you're looking at it as an entire infrastructure plan budget versus what is going to be for this public safety building, staff salary and so forth? So it's not kind of?
We've, we've had a bit of a disconnect on that over time. Maybe it would have been better if I had included that, but all of those previous numbers like the 57 million, the 75, the 91, those were without staff salaries and benefits.
numbers like the 57 million, the 75, the 91, those were without staff salaries and benefits.
I see.
And so to make it comparable to those numbers, I didn't include it, but this slide does.
This slide does?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because in some projects, you actually do have, you do include staff salaries. So I was just wondering, is it in here somewhere? But thanks for the clarification. So I, I mostly, well, I think everybody knows that I'm very supportive of a public safety building, a new one, that's not in our basement over here. However, I've stated this before. Everybody here is working on the housing plan, the workforce, the affordable housing. And this site, I know that it's been decided from years and as Councilmember Shar said, it's been a decade or so. However, this is one of our highest and best-use sites for housing and retail. And, which is why it's really hard for me to understand, you know, why is it that we cannot revisit this and actually look at what Redwood City had done? They put their police building, brand new, on the east side of the 101, and it works. And we have another site in this city where we can do the same thing, which is at the A T and T site at, off the West Bay Shore. I know it's costing you guys 350,000 a month or whatever the costs are, but when you do it at the other site, we don't have to go as deep. We don't have to, it can just be a very simple building that doesn't have to be compatible completely with the neighborhood. So it's, there's a possibility of having a less expensive building over there that's not going to cost us over 106 million. It's going to be over 106. I know you promised it would stay at that price, but escalating costs and everything. And at the end of the day, you know, our MEOC is still not going to be able to be parked there all the time. It's going to have to use other city sites. And while I do see fire trucks, when they're coming here for a meeting, they're parked all on the street. You know, I mean, those streets in college, in, in the California Avenue area are very narrow, so having all the safety vehicles over there coming for a meeting or some, of some sort is just, is just asking for more traffic congestion over there. So, you know, study session, so I'm letting you know my thoughts and how this site is not used to its highest potential for retail and for housing. I mean, this is one of our own, the city-owned sites. We have librarians, our own staff that are not able to live in this city, and we could do something about that. But instead, you know, and we, we have a remedy for this that we're not willing to explore. So, my comments, thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So, on one hand, I really appreciate you guys moving forward on this. I was on I B R C and I kind of went through the whole public safety thing. And so I, I have a great appreciation for why this is needed. I actually like, commend the city manager for trying to value engineers, do one basement level. I mean, it was great that you're trying to look out for the city, trying to save money here. You know, one idea I had, and this is probably too late, but, I mean, when impossible, possible is just to bridge it. I mean, so rather than having the building disconnected from the public safety, from the garage, maybe you could bridge it and have extra parking over the street. So I've seen some cities do that versus having to have an extra basement level. I don't know, but maybe you guys could think about it. But, you know, one of the things I want to just check here, because I've heard this said many times, and just because it's said many times doesn't mean it's true, but I've heard staff say this, I have my fellow council members say this, that it's costing us $350,000 a month in additional cost. And I guess, can staff talk about that? Because, and I would assume this means that, you assume that the, the longest bull run that we've ever had in at least American history will continue on indefinitely. And that's supposed to be a really big assumption, you know? We, we have a all-out trade war right now with China. You know, last time we had a trade war worldwide, we had, you know, World War, you know, Great Depression. So I just want to understand the staff's opinion about how will costs keep going straight up, continuously? That seems like a really big assumption, so maybe staff could talk about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. It, it is somewhat of a big assumption, but let's see. That, that assumption is, is based on looking at our construction cost for the public safety building and assuming construction cost escalation of 4% annually. So, so that's what we've got built into...
And does construction cost always go up 4% every year, no matter what?
No, it doesn't. In some recent years, it's gone up as much as 6 and 7%.
Okay, but does it ever go down or only goes up?
Well, let me say this, let me just jump in here. We did some assessment, I thought we had some of our cost estimators from outside sort of corroborate what we see in the market. I think your point's a really good one, except for the fact that it's not indefinite that we've made this assumption. This is, this, this, well, first of all, we haven't inflated the cost by 350,000 a month. We're just saying that it costs potentially that.
Well, historically, right? And if historically the cost continues to be that, then...
Right, but what will matter is our target date is mid-2020 for awarding the bid, the contract. So it is at that point that we have to make the commitment on what the cost is going to be on the project. So the real issue is what will happen over the next two years? I mean, that's, that's really the question. And again, I don't think we have added in 350,000 necessarily always a month, or are we keeping that in the project estimate up through 2020? And if it goes beyond that, then we've got troubles.
I understand. I just, I guess the reason why I'm questioning this is, you know, when I get investment prospectus from Shaw Schwab, one of the things it says on there is historical results don't necessarily mean this is future results, right? And, and what you guys are saying by 350,000 a month is that whatever happened historically, which was one of the biggest bull run markets we've ever had, will continue indefinitely, which I think is a big assumption. And the reason why I'm just checking you guys on this is because I think, you know, we are talking about a lot of money here, right? We're talking about 106 million dollars or, you know, 200-plus million for infrastructure. And we want to spend our residents' money wisely. And right now, are we at the top of the market? Are we top of the construction market? It could be, maybe not. Maybe it's going to keep going up, maybe it'll double again, who knows? But, you know, I just, I just want us to be a little bit practical about it as well because I think by saying that, I mean, if, if we really believe that this bull market's going to continue indefinitely, maybe we should all just, if it's heavily in the stock market, because we'll all be rich because it could keep going up. But I don't think anyone knows that with great confidence.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of storm clouds on the horizon, who knows what will happen, right? So I, I think, I think, you know, and I appreciate Councilmember Koo talking about, like, really thinking about this hard in terms of, is this really the best location? Is this the right time? Because we're, we're not talking, if we're talking about not so much money, that's one thing. We're talking about a lot of money. That's a lot of things that we're not going to be able to do, or a lot of burden we're going to be placing on our constituents to make this happen. So I just want us thinking about this really rationally. And I know, like, I understand the passion for this, because I've, I was on the Infrastructure Blue Ribbon Commission, like, it was almost 10, 10 years, it's been a long time now. So I totally get why we're trying to make this happen. It's just, we're making this happen at, at a time, you know, where a lot of people are talking about peak construction, right? In terms of the highest possible construction cost. And is that really the wisest thing to be doing at this present moment? So that's what I wonder.
Good.
And that's why I, I think, I think a better way of saying is maybe historically, construction cost, construction of cost in the past has increased $350,000 a month, but there's no proof that it's going to keep happening for the next 10 years.
Yeah, I, well, I know, I think those are really good points and I think there's some solace that we can provide, which is, I mean, the main point we're saying is that we should, we should hedge our bets on the, on the fact that time is money and we should proceed on schedule as planned in order to bid this project by mid-2020. Now that being said, everything we're doing is just cost estimating what we think the project cost will be between now and then. The fact of the matter is, is if a year from now we plunge into a major recession, we suddenly say, forget it, everything's out, we, we still are, we're designing the building, has nothing to do with what the cost will be in the future. So we would have the ability to suddenly say, well, boy, it's going to be a much different market a year from now when we go out for construction and our new estimates are now less than what we thought. But for purposes right now of planning, we are essentially saying we are relying on what the recent history has been.
Okay. Well, I think that's a good way of saying. I just want to make sure that we are transparent and true to the public what's really going on, right? What's going on is historically, maybe costs escalated at 350K a month. It may, it may not do that in the future, right? It may, it may go down, it may go up, you don't know. And if you really did know, then you shouldn't be here. You should be trading on the stock market right now because you know more than everyone here, because it's, it's really hard to trade the stock market. And I just want to make sure that we are, are really, you know, putting out right facts because the fact that it's going up 350K a month is not a fact. It's maybe what happened historically, but it's not a fact that this is going to happen going forward.
And for potentially the worst impact, that's what we're doing, planning. We're not spending it, we're planning.
I, I get that.
Okay, the alternative would be to underestimate it and come back at the end and everyone say, geez, what, what, did you guys realize, you know, now you need more money, so.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Eric and, I'm sorry, Adrian first and then Eric, but also a reminder as far as housing, we have parking lots all over town that could be used for housing. Secondly, we can identify a acreage, a block from this where Joe Semidion has said the North County is donating that land and all they need for that one is money. So there are many possibilities if we, if we choose to pursue those. Adrian.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for bringing this part of the public safety building to us. Just a quick couple comments. So one, completely agree with the city manager's intent here on the two floors of the garage for the public safety building. If we wanted to save that six or seven million dollars on parking, we could have done it in the parking lot across the street, but we didn't. That's, that's done. One question kind of about closing potential funding gaps here. Have we explored any public-private partnerships with local foundations or individuals, any other funding sources, even things like naming rights?
No, not at this point, we have not.
Okay. There may be an opening there. Palo Alto is a wealthy community, we do have a lot of foundations and individuals here, and that may be something we could consider down the road. Thank you.
So, so thanks very much. So, yeah, I was pretty disappointed about the, the 10 million on the second floor because when the Cal Ave garage came to us in June, right? I mean, one of the reasons I think a number of us were sort of less sharp penciled on it than we might have been is that we looked and said, oh, we can take a floor off the, off the public safety building and save more money and, and lose fewer parking spaces. So I'm disappointed to see that evolve. But the city manager said something I wanted to, actually I wanted to ask about, right? Which was, you know, my understanding is what you said is the critical path here is not actually the design of the public safety building itself, but the construction of the garage. And...
That, that was true a while ago.
Is that still the case?
So we're sort of at the point now where our schedule shows us continuing design and really getting underway right when the garage finishes.
Okay. So I guess, so that's, that's sort of the question I wanted to ask, because I think Councilmember Tanaka's brought up an interesting point, which is, you know, suppose there's a recession, right, in the next year or two or something like that? I mean, we've got, among other things, $35 million assumed from hotels that don't exist yet to be part of this. And if there's a recession in a year or something like that, you may, a bunch of this stuff may be at risk. It may not just be, gee, construction costs go down, but some of our funding may disappear too. So the question I wanted to ask is, what's the drop dead date? Do you estimate that, you know, we could make a change and say, you know what, we do want to go back and try the one, the one, the one basement story or some kind of a change of that kind of magnitude? You know, I mean, I assume we don't have to make that tonight, right? But is it six months from now? Is it a year from now? Is it 18 months from now?
I understand that this is really around completing the design itself, right? So what, what are the impacts of design modifications?
Because somebody would have to go back and figure out, okay, where do we put the servers if we were to do something or, or some kind of change like that?
About, we haven't evaluated this in detail. I'd guess that it's on the order of, of six to 12 months. And even at that time, if we were to do that, it might impact our overall schedule somewhat, but I think it would be possible.
Six to 12 months? Okay. So if we're going to start a trade war, we better get on with it now? Okay, okay.
And I'm thinking that, I think it's on the order of 12 months from now that we really show our kind of pre-qualification and bidding process starting. So obviously by then, we're wanting to have a completely designed project.
So the, so the window for us to change, change course is actually closing pretty fast is what I think I hear you saying? Okay.
So we do have some people who want to speak to this. If you would all remember when you're speaking, this is a study session. We have vetted this many ways. It goes to the final ARB interview on Thursday morning. So if you would recall that and that we have another big issue coming up tonight, I'd really appreciate it. So your names are on the board. It's Roger Smith, Havenfield Hitching, Stephanie Munoz, Nelson Boukhan, and just to get a start.
Thank you, Mayor.
Getting close to the mic helps.
Roger Smith, I went through the Citizens Police Academy in 19, or 2004, went through the police building. It was a joke then. I mean, a guy was sitting on a, on a bench out in the hallway. Why we haven't been sued, I have no clue. Lydia, I appreciate your comments. If you look at the, wouldn't it have been nice to have this on Park Avenue? It would have been perfect. But 2008 came along. This is Palo Alto process on steroids. If you look down this thing, I mean, Blue Ribbon Committee, Blue Ribbon Committee, no one would pull the trigger. I mean, we have to do this because it's going to cost a lot more. Greg, you're in the real estate business, you know, costs just keep going up. I was at ARB and got to spend two hours the other day and I knew they were going to say yes, because being the rookie I am, but no, let's defer it again for the fourth time or fifth time. I mean, I have, one of my daughters lives at 425 Grant, we own a condo there. This would be a great place for it. I mean, it's going to be construction-wise and I appreciate that. But, but also in 2014, the council came to me and said, we're going to do the T O T. Would you mind being the business guy on the ballot? And I did so. And it, the ballot read, "To ensure continued funding for basic and essential services such as police, fire, and street maintenance." There is no question, if you were here in 2014, we all went out and sold this, that we're going to get a new police building. I mean, we promised that, right? And we can wordsmith this, but I was out there, along with many other people, voting for this. I mean, making sure this happened. Please get this done. I'm 77, I want to see this new building before I die. And the other thing, if we have an earthquake, we're toast. We're toast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's not let Roger down here. I want to say, great comments by all the city council members tonight. I'm really glad the city council has prioritized funding critical infrastructure. I think the community really appreciates it. I know both my wife and I will be voting for the hotel tax. As a dedicated emergency services volunteer, during my years of volunteer service, I've come to realize the number one thing for our response after an earthquake is that the police and fire stations remain operational and at full capacity. So this project is really important. I'm going to go through a list of a couple of points brought up tonight, but they all follow the track of, we need to do this right and we need to do it now. The first is the location of the building. The Park Avenue site would have been better. No question this would have been a great site for housing, but the problem with putting it across the bridge in the, in the Baylands is that it's in a, I have a lot of stuff to say. It's in a high, it's in a sea-level rise area, it's on soft soil that easily liquefies, and it's separated from the rest of the city by the bridge. The problem with the, the second, the reason we need the second-story garage floor, I was originally for getting rid of it. Remember that taking that 100 spots or whatever spots away impacts not only the merchants but also the neighborhood park... but also the neighborhood parking, which is why the entire community was unified in supporting it. Please don't put a blinking light on top of that tower. Those things drive me nuts. Like, we think about it during the day, but at night, if all you see is this blinking light, you're going to drive people. I'll try and go for seven days of power, not four, critical infrastructure is four, but it would be great if it was seven. Do consider, you know, just not cutting corners on hardening. I noticed on the right side, you can kind of drive a four-wheel vehicle up, so consider putting a couple of bollards in there and also some bulletproof glass in the lobby for the people behind the desk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, Nelson Buchanan, and Kelsey Baines.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and council members. Does anybody besides me see that there's anything missing in this discussion? I mean, in addition to the fact that there has never been a public discussion of whether we actually do need a public safety building, the council just assumed, and it's prerogative to assume, that's why we elected you to make these decisions. The council just assumed that we needed one, and we've been talking about it now for years, but nobody has ever asked. I mean, in addition to that, and I'll give you a hint, we're saying to Stanford, you've got to build housing for those workers. We're not going to put them out here and have the cars going back and forth 24 hours a day to get here. We're saying to Google, you've got to build housing for those workers because the streets are too congested. And we're saying, or at least I'm saying to the school boards, you have to build housing for the teachers because they're costing us too much. Where's the housing? Oh, oh, well, our policemen, they don't want to live on the site. Ask them. Nobody's asked them. We have a situation in which policemen are getting over $100,000 a year, and that has to be. For one thing, you need a special type of personality for, to be a policeman. You have to be strong but caring. That's not, it's not an easy combination to find, and you're going to have to pay a lot for it. But in addition to that, there's the fact that they can't afford housing. You've got to put some, if you build a new building here, you've got to put some housing on it. And it's useless to say, oh, well, we reached our height limit. Well, change the height limit. You've got to have housing. Thank you.
Nelson Buchanan.
Good evening, good morning, whatever time it is. I'd like to speak to both these projects and sum it up. I hope you give it full throttle for both of them. A couple of comments on the parking garage. In a perfect world, it would be a parking assessment district funded. About the businesses who would be benefiting from it, that water is under the bridge and not worth going over. Two refinements you can do, one is to make a commitment to the neighborhoods about how many cars you're going to pull out from the permit parking programs. And you could also follow through on your intention, presumed intention to get rid of free parking. It's time to put an end to free parking and charge for parking in the lots and the garages. On the police station, I couldn't support it more. I too have been in public service, safety-related business my entire career, from the Navy to El Camino Hospital. I have been in the police station in a moment of urgency when a neighbor had a stalking, public, personal safety issue. I watched the policeman go into action. It was a terrible conditions. As far as the tower goes, you can put anything you want on the top of it, just make sure the tower works. I've been in a extortion ransom type thing and watched one of our public elected officials deliver the ransom and entered district situation and lost communications as it went through three towns. That's a very tense time. It all worked out well, but you can't overspend on a communications tower, even if it has a light on it. And I hope you get it all done before I die. I'm 74, Roger.
Well, we have two challenges of something terrible happening if this doesn't get approved. Greetings.
Greetings. Hi, my name is Kelsey Baines. I'm a resident of University South and a psychologist at the VA where I specialize in treating homeless veterans. I first want to commend the architects. I think it's a lovely building, and I support the police being central in the city where they can respond in a timely fashion. I was particularly struck by the beauty of the parking garage. And I have been struck by Palo Alto's parking garages and just want to say, y'all are very good at housing cars. My concern from a public safety perspective is that people are living in their cars. Another public safety issue is police officers who can't afford to live in this community, in the community that they serve. I was at a San Mateo City Council meeting, maybe about a month ago, where a city council member was speaking in regret about a police officer who was gravely injured on his commute home to Tracy. So this really seems like a missed opportunity to build housing on public land in a dense way that's close to public transit. And I wish that the council would pay less attention to minor design elements on the police station rather than major issues in this town of people not having places to live. A final comment just about process tonight is that there are working people waiting to speak here about losing their housing. And I think that the council members should keep that in mind as they make their future comments tonight, to not get wrapped up in minor details like what the cell towers look like. Thank you.
I just happen to agree with you. Brett Anderson, Dave Cole, Jack Morton, and Rita Varell.
Good evening, Brett Anderson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on this topic. I do support the Public Safety Building. I think that is a great thing to invest in for our community. And it may be expensive because we're at a very high point in the market. We're at a very long, mature bull run market, and that means the cost of living and expenses around here are probably pretty much peaked and are going to be either flat or going down very soon. Somehow, a garage got attached to this project, you know, back in 2012. It was just put on as we need parking, and it got carried forward, and it looks like it's the biggest opportunity to save our infrastructure budget from deficit by eliminating the parking garage. If you cannot eliminate the parking garage for this project, which is really there only to serve at this point what we have, a noontime peak for parking, is to make itself funding by charging for parking. I mean, we should not be taxing our own citizens and visitors to our city to pay for the parking for a few hundred people that want to drive to this commercial area. So in a principle, we should at least fund this 100% through parking fees to make sure that we've got proper incentives for people to find alternatives and support a more dense living environment where we can have housing and afford the transportation alternatives that people can use more effectively and make us all more productive. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. David Cole, Jack Morton, and Rita Varell.
David Cole with Carbon Free Palo Alto, thank you, City Council. We support the public service building. It's the garage that is, I think, needs to be revisited, and it's been on the books for a long time. In that time, we now have Uber, we have Lyft, we have the TMA, which we didn't have before. Very soon, we're going to have scooters, first mile, last mile. We're going to have electrification, maybe even before the building's done. So just because something's been on the books for a long time doesn't mean it doesn't need to be revisited. Somehow, it got by the comp plan, it got by the SIP plan, and in light of what we've seen in San Francisco with the climate summit happening, this is a last vestige to the ICEH. That would be the internal combustion engine. This is going to last 50 years or more. We need to think carefully about our investments, especially when we could save about 50 million and cover the deficits in the rest of the projects by not having this garage. So I ask that when we move forward, for those council members that are remaining, check the list. Is this compatible with sustainability? Is this compatible with the comp plan? Is this compatible with the SIP? Does this reduce greenhouse gases? Does it increase greenhouse gases? All of these projects bypassed all of that. What I expect from council is to look at those issues going forward, not how long it's been on the docket, and then decide, well, we promised this. What you promised was less parking. TMA will do that at one-tenth the cost. So those are the issues going forward. Those are the things you need to think about. Those are the things that we paid you for, paid you for, that we voted you for. So please, those are the things that count. It's not the promises, it's what's behind the promise. We promised better parking, better living. Those are the things that you can deliver. If we have to revisit a project, let's do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack Morton. Welcome, former council member Morton.
Thank you, Mayor Liz, and council members. Those of us who work, live, and invest in the California Avenue couldn't disagree more with the last two speakers. We've, since I was on the council, we have lost three opportunities to build a police building. Okay, we understand you want to build a police building. We have worked in that area, which has been underparked for almost every project that has been approved in the last 10, 15 years. So now, as an option to balance your infrastructure budget, you're looking at the possibility of underparking your own building, of transferring 100 parking spots not to another city project, but to the commercial garage that the neighbors and the businesses have fought for five years to ensure. I just want to tell you that if you really, really want to fill that gap and have to fill it now, the easiest way is not to build the police building. The parking structure is the one way that we can put back to California Avenue and the surrounding neighborhoods, the underpark, the loss of parking that's occurred by the continual underparking of improved projects. If you can't park your own staff, then how do we impose that requirement on the rest of the neighborhood? I can almost assure you that if we use the California Avenue as a means to fulfill the gap in the infrastructure budget, that will be taken as a betrayal of what we have worked, tried to work with the community and staff. So I really encourage you to fully park your own building and stand by the agreements you've made for the garage. Thank you very much. And I'm here, of course, speaking on behalf of the merchants of California Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Varell.
Good evening. I don't know if you should build it or not, but I think that the economics here are really bad. If you go to the slide where the deficit is looking, you know, the hotel tax is like a private budget waiting for an inheritance. The, you're also waiting to win the Lotto. You're also counting on the economic robustness that we've had for the last 10 years, as was mentioned by Mr. Tanaka, continuing. If this was a private budget, it would never be passed. But you are depending on a tax, which I am not going to vote for because I also agreed with Greg Tanaka, thinking that if you have the highest hotel tax in the area, you are going to kill the golden goose. I'd rather have a lower, you know, hotel tax and be assured that our hotels are going to be filled. Because it's not only the hotel tax, it's the people who work for those hotels and the people who provide food in our neighborhood. If corporations don't come to our hotels, this town, city, is going to lose a lot more money than just a hotel tax. So thank you, Mr. Tanaka. I think it's really important to live within our budget, whether that's a personal budget or a city budget. In 2008, we had an amazing crash. 100, I'm sorry, 1 million construction personnel left. That is why we have high construction costs now. And personally, I would never, never assume that just because something might cost more, we have to rush in and buy it now. That is not strong economics. And to the people who don't care about what the antenna looks like, this is going to last for 50 years. Let's have attractive buildings, even if it takes a little longer to get them built. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our study session. Our public speakers, and thank you, staff, for being here, for making the presentation tonight and so forth. And I hope this does go forward with haste, and I think you've heard that from the majority of the people who have spoken tonight.
Hope to be back by the end of November. I would just point out that, you know, I know Michael's worked on this for a lot longer than I have. It's just been 10 years for me, but when we met, both of us had different colored hair than we do now, so I just thought I'd share that little tidbit. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. So with that, although it's hard to believe, we are actually going on to our regular meeting. We have been in a study session. We are now at the end of our study session, and we're heading for city manager comments, minutes approval, and the consent calendar in that order.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, just did want to share again with the council and our public that following your adoption of the anti-idling ordinance, members of the city council, and I think actually Councilmember Holman in particular specifically asked we do some sort of card or flyer that could be handed out to remind people of the new ordinance. So at your places, you should have one of a series of bookmarks that have been developed as handouts, which we'll be distributing to PTAs, schools, and other groups. Also, anybody can print out their own copies, since we posted the bookmarks as PDFs on the website at thecityofpaloalto.org, website forward slash idle free under the resources section. So each one of these are ways that kids can hand out a nice little bookmark from school to their parents or whoever might be idling, that asks a sort of, did you know that car exhaust can aggravate asthma and decrease lung function? And then some more things to say on the back, so a bunch of those. So a neat idea that our staff came up with is a kinder, gentler way to change behaviors. Two aviation-related items. First of all, as part of our city's commitment to issues that may impact airplane noise, we are hosting a public workshop on Tuesday, October 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at City Hall in council chambers, where San Francisco Airport staff will present their new landing system called Ground Based Augmentation System, or GBAS. So the GBAS will soon become operational at San Francisco Airport, and this is an opportunity for our community to ask some detailed follow-up questions of those folks. And then secondly, just the aftermath of the small plane crash that we had at, near our airport several weeks ago. We, our staff did contact multiple federal and state agencies, advise them of the crash as well as the potential for hazardous materials which could enter our marsh. I think appropriate to sort of share this due diligence, just given the earlier conversations we had during the acknowledgement of Ms. Gordon and Phil Bobel's presentations. We notified the FAA, the National Transportation and Safety Board, the Coast Guard, California Office of Emergency Services, U.S. Office of Endangered Species, et cetera. Palo Alto Watership Protection Staff were also on the scene on best how to remove the debris. We didn't find any fuel, oil, or other fluids leaking into the marsh. The Palo Alto Fire Department was present for removal of the plane and ready to deploy booms and any other necessary measures to ensure if there were leaks, they would be quickly contained and cleaned up. Fire staff tested the water around the plane for hazardous materials, didn't find any. And as a precaution, an oil absorption boom was secured around the wing area for containment. Our staff also had a contractor Clean Harbor available if there were leaks that required additional assistance, and fortunately, that assistance wasn't required. There were a small number of native plants that were damaged from the process of removing the plane, and our staff is working with Save the Bay to replant the area using native plants grown in the Baylands. plants grown in the Baylands native plant nursery. So testimony to this kind of care and thoroughness of our staff in the aftermath of that tragedy. Just a reminder, I think David Cole mentioned it earlier again, but just grab your helmet, pump up your tires, and hop on your bike as the 9th Annual Bike Palo Alto returns for riders of all ages Sunday, September 3rd, 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Fair Meadow Elementary School again serves as the headquarters to register, get maps, have your tires checked and changed, and all of those sorts of things. We also kick off this fall's Walk and Roll Week in Palo Alto Schools and Bike Palo Alto, which is completely volunteer-run. If anybody wants to help, you can go to bikepalowalto.org. I mentioned it last week, but as we get closer and just on the heels of Council Member DuBois's comments, a reminder to RSVP to attend the first community meeting on the co-design of Coverley that will be held this Thursday, September 27th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Coverley Pavilion. More information is at the project's website at PAUSD.org/coverleyco-design. And obviously, it was the Governor Brown's Global Action, Climate Action Summit in San Francisco took place last week. More than 5,000 international delegates, certainly had visitors from our sister city in Heidelberg here. And our Chief Sustainability Officer, Gil Friend, was able to attend. He spoke at two of the more than 300 affiliated summit events and participated in a Cities for Climate Kickoff, where more than 30 mayors shared their commitments to various climate change actions such as net zero carbon for all new buildings by 2030. And then lastly, just a reminder and a plug for this Friday night's Moonlight Run out at the Baylands. As you all probably know, that the race has been expanded, so there will not only be the typical 5K walk, which begins at 7:00 p.m. There is a half marathon, which begins at 7:30 p.m. There is a 5K run that will start at 8:15 p.m., and a 10K run that starts at 8:25 p.m. Obviously, you need to get out there pretty much at the beginning, pick your poison, and have fun running in the dark this Friday night. And that is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to give everyone an idea of what we're doing, we're going to plow on. If you see colleagues get up from time to time to stretch or whatever, know that they can also watch what's going on from the room right behind us. So next, we have Minutes Approval. May I have a motion and a second? A motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? This is for Minutes Approval. And next, we have the Consent Calendar, and as you know, this is voted on in one motion unless something is removed from the calendar by three council members. Councilmember Koo.
I'm registering a no vote on item number eight.
And you may comment on that after we vote, as you know. Councilmember Holman.
I'll also be registering a no vote on number eight.
Okay. In that case, I don't see any other lights on, so this means that we're doing numbers eight and nine on consent, and two members wish to speak briefly after this to explain their no. Okay, would you vote on the board, please?
Mayor Niss, we have speakers. Mayor Niss, we have speakers.
You typically, I think, hear from the public before your vote?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't see those up on the board. In that case, then, before we vote on this, Rita Varell, Niva Yarkin, and Becky Sanders want to speak on number eight.
Good evening again. So my basic concern continues to be, why is Cool Blocks being paid with $25,000 and $75,000 of time, staff time, to total $100,000 this year, and who knows how much next year, when every other organization in this city, including the Emergency Response Team, is not, is not paid? All the volunteers in this community do it free. So the other thing that, you know, we have a $4 million deficit this year that we are trying to solve, and I don't see how $100,000 for this effort goes to solving that problem. The other thing is that I'm concerned that this Beta 2, or whatever it is, is a foot in the door, and that each year, the cost of this program will continue to increase. I don't know that this program is necessary in a developed community where we have, we don't have greenhouse gas electricity. I understand that one of the advantages of this program is reducing electricity, but we've already got carbon-free electricity. The other thing is, I have not seen anything regarding Mr. Keen's relationship with the Enterprise Institute, or the Empowerment Institute, listed in this data. My understanding is that it's a close relationship. I'm not questioning that, but I just wonder if it's ethical. Maybe that's too strong of a word. I think that his relationship with the Empowerment Institute needs to be discussed before this is considered. Thank you.
Niva Yarkin, I mean, you can see your names on the board, so if you would come closer and be ready to speak, that would help.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In my opinion, the city has no extra money or city staff hours to be supporting Cool Block. We have many educated people who could explain environmental issues and the emergency response personnel who have done an excellent job. If I want to meet my neighbors, I am involved in the many city issues that affect my neighborhood. I have met a lot of my neighbors this way, at no cost to the city. I could also volunteer at the many citywide events to meet new neighbors. Please think carefully about what the city can afford. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Becky Sanders.
Good evening, Mayor Niss and members of the City Council. So I sent you a letter, so I don't have to read that. But I just want to reiterate that it just doesn't make sense at this time to go forward with Cool Block. I mean, I have nothing personal against anybody attached to the project. I know a lot of people that are gung-ho for the concept, but my impression is that many of those folks have not actually really read the staff report and done, gone, gone deep into it, to see that, well, it is redundant, it's, it does seem to smack of a pet project because there's just been so much putting it on consent and not really having a public debate on it. So it just has that slight smell of something not quite cricket. And so I think you should take it, I guess you're not going to take it off consent, but I think it should be discussed openly and not put on public consent on the calendar. So thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who's speaking tonight. It's a great turnout.
A.C., Elaine Meyer, A.C. Johnston, and Eleanor Laney.
Please remove item eight from the Consent Calendar. This is a much more complicated issue than just saying, oh, $25,000. That's not what it's about. The contract with the Enlightenment Institute is complex and very costly. It needs further scrutiny for legal and financial reasons. The $25,000 amount featured so prominently is just the tip of the financial iceberg. It's only for, quote, "basic services" bucket, but there's a big hole at the bottom of this bucket. If you read the proposal carefully, it authorizes several other categories of expenditures: additional services, reimbursable expenses, and a city staff person costing about $75,000 or more. There also seems to be a plan to produce a video on page 14. I detail the expense items in my email to the council. The legal question is, what is the project's connection to the original Empowerment Institute and Cool Cities? It's very confusing. I have read on the web that this project is a research project of the Environmental Institute, but I think, and it's only got three board members, David Gerson, his wife, and Josie Moran, who runs a cosmetics company. Anyway, my memo to the council had the details, and I would just like to add one sentence. Because of the city manager's long association with this organization and with the responsible party, David Gerson, can we assume that he will recuse himself from the discussion of this issue? Thank you.
A.C. Johnston, Eleanor Laney, and Catherine Johnston.
Mayor Niss and City Council members, my name is A.C. Johnston. I live in University South. I'm a member of the Utilities Advisory Commission, but I'm speaking not on behalf of the commission. I'm speaking as an individual and someone who's had direct experience with the Cool Block program. About a year ago, our, I live in a condominium building in, in University South, our building was asked to be a Cool Block. And so we have participated in the program. We went through the curriculum, the eight sessions of the curriculum, and what I saw as a result of our experience was, you know, actual change in behavior by our residents. And I'm not going to talk about all of the things that we did, because there are others here that are going to talk about. I'm going to talk about kind of the environmental aspect to it. One of the things, as part of the program, we had people from the Zero Waste Palo Alto come and speak to us about recycling and composting. Now, you may be able to learn those things by going on the website, you may be able to read about it, but having people from the city come, talk to people, really show them how you do this. This goes in this bucket, this goes in that bucket. Give us a tutorial meant that people actually started to recycle, they started to compost. It's had a distinct effect in our building, and these are changes which we're not going to backslide on because you're making a commitment to your neighbors, and you're making a commitment to your community to do this. We are committed in Palo Alto to the SCAP, to the Sustainability Implementation Program. This is something that will give us a concrete steps forward in those programs. I urge you to support the program.
Eleanor Laney.
I'm Eleanor Laney. I live in Professoreville, 1128 Emerson Street. I've lived here for 15 years. I don't know how much you know about Cool Block, but its focus is emergency preparedness, lowering carbon footprint, resources conservation, sustainability, and establishing community capital among neighbors. For 15 years, I've just gently waved to people and haven't really known my neighbors on just my 1100 block, and Cool Block has really changed this. As the gentleman before me was talking about, it is all focused on actions that neighbors take together. When I receive an email from the city, as wonderful as they are, or information in my utility bill, it's really hard to take that one step. But when you're doing it with your block, in these bimonthly meetings where you're keeping each other honest and giving each other tips on water conservation, you know, recycling, everything, we're all keeping each other honest and moving forward. Also, the community capital has been amazing. Our, our one block had a giant garage sale, and we took a percent of our earnings and had a lot of fun and donated 13 trees for Canopy. We've participated in the garden club of Palo Alto's Monarch Project, and we all have milkweed planted. At our final potluck, somebody brought one of these earthquake survival tools so that everybody now knows how to turn off their gas if necessary, and we also have a map of where everybody's turnoff is and our contact information. This togetherness and supportedness of being prepared for emergency would not be possible on a larger basis, so doing block by block, it's a very effective program. I've been a block leader, and it has transformed the 1100 block of Emerson. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Johnston, Brett Anderson, and Gail Price.
Councilmembers, I want to just strengthen what Eleanor just said. I was the block leader for our building. We're a vertical block. We were the first, one of the early vertical blocks. How would this work? Now, of course, when you live in a condominium with other people, you, you know everyone's people you know well, but never do you sit for a week after a meeting, every two weeks, in somebody else's apartment with somebody else leading a meeting on something they didn't know as much about, and you do this for months. There is a fusion. It's like boot camp. You, you, there's no pressure to select any certain individual goal. So, so people felt comfortable to listen and to just do the parts that they wanted to, but everyone was moving. We talked about what we could accomplish individual homes, but also what we could tackle as a building over time. What was great is that four of the five people were on the HOA Board of Directors. They were involved, and that means as long as we have this administration, we're going to be able to get a lot of things in, like big water containers under our stairs, which is a very strong part of a building. In, in an emergency, we have water. We have babies in our building, we have people in wheelchairs. So we tackle things like that. So it's a, what it builds is a cohesion of intent for change. Personally, and for our building, a huge thing. So our motto, to go fast, go alone; to go far, go together.
Thank you. Brett Anderson, Gail, Gail Price, sooner or later.
So I did run a Cool Block in my neighborhood, and it was a great experience in terms of reaching out and building some bonds between the folks on our, in our, on our street, who really hadn't had any reason to contact each other or socialize, or a common goal to work on, really, for the 15 years that I had been living there. So many of the people are just very disconnected from, from their physical neighbors. And I think that with global warming being the, the challenge of our times, and the amount that our community depends on the city to make it easy for us to change our behaviors, to live a more sustainable life, to travel easier, to make our homes cleaner, safer, those services that are coming from the city deserve positive reinforcement for, for uptake in our communities. So we have to build processes, tools, administration, to try and help build that kind of community capital. And I think the Cool Blocks builds the website, builds the tools, has a process, has kind of a code that they're developing to help make it easy for people to come together and do the things that are really going to move us to a more sustainable future. So the city has a big opportunity here to use this network, to get the home genie out to more people, to get feedback on that program, to make it better, to get zero waste and recycling out better, to get maybe drought-tolerant planting out. All of those things are going to contribute, and the uptake of that by our citizens of city programs is enhanced by programs like this that reinforce and get people to talk and share the best practices of using those services. So I think this is a, this is a proactive approach to getting behavior change in our city and change our lifestyles so that they're better in all those realms, safety, as well as, of course, sustainability and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Price, former council member Price.
Good evening. My name's Gail Price. I live on Orm Street, and I'm a proud Cool Block captain. I strongly I strongly support the program, and I appreciate all the comments made by others. Thank you to the council, the staff, and the community for support of the program. The breadth and depth of the program emphasizes many of the values and beliefs that Palo Alto stands for. It complements so many of the things that we do or the priorities that we have addressed. For instance, healthy city, healthy communities. It complements and enhances many parts of our comprehensive plan, the goals and the vision of the city, and it strongly advances sustainability and the issue of climate action and our climate action plan. These issues are critical to us as a community, are critical to us as individuals. And to the extent that we develop programs and implement ideas and actions, we will make a difference, and we can't defer it any longer. There are actions happening now. This will simply complement some very fine work that has taken place. It's very clear that the curriculum for Cool Block is vigorous, it's intense, it educates, it advocates, and it pulls people together. It makes us better prepared, it addresses sustainability, and many of the other elements which were mentioned earlier. We have a responsibility to continue to do this, and there will never be too many programs in Palo Alto to achieve these goals. One of the best parts of this whole program is the strong community engagement and the building of relationships among our neighbors. I'm fond of my neighbors. I'm even more fond of them now, particularly those that were on the team. So thank you very much, and I hope all members of the community can engage in this program. I urge you to approve the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Slater, Kayla Kidmore, Annette Isaacson.
So thank you for allowing us the opportunity today, and thank you for all the Cool Block participants and leaders for showing up tonight and waiting until 10 o'clock at night to be able to weigh in on this issue. I'd like to say that I think there's been some misinformation or misperception about what this program is. We are trying to leverage programs that the city has. We're trying to enhance the emergency services. We're trying to enhance the healthy cities. We're trying to enhance community relations. We're trying to enhance what the utility department has already done in terms of sustainability. So we're trying to drive our citizens towards the programs that the city has. Our goal is to embed the program into the fabric of the community, into the fabric of our department, of the departments, and the city's departments, and more importantly, into the lives of the citizens. We're already feeling the effects of climate change here in Palo Alto. We've got a drought, we've got really toxic air that we've had to breathe in the last month or so, we've got sea level rise affecting our infrastructure. These will all have an impact on our quality of life that we cherish. Mother Nature doesn't care what political signs you display in your front yards. We're all responsible, and we all have to deal with the ramifications of our choices. But we can do this if we pull together, understand our impact, help each other in times of crisis, build bridges amongst ourselves, and build a better future for ourselves, our children, and our grandchildren. You on the dais have a particular responsibility to enact policies to help, but we need citizens to forge a future that will lessen our impact and protect this beautiful planet and our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla Kidmore, Annette Isaacson, and Lisa Van Duzen.
It's actually Skidmore with an S.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a resident at 325 Channing Avenue and part of the Cool Block program. I'm also an emergency services volunteer for the city of Palo Alto, and in my role as an ESV, I found it very challenging to organize residents in my building, which is my block, it's the woodmark, for introduction and education. I tried on several occasions and got very little turnout. Cool Block gave me the perfect platform and a receptive audience to share my role as an ESV while dovetailing with the Emergency Preparedness Chapter in the Cool Block program. So I really felt that I was able to do my duty as an ESV in education via the Cool Block program. So I urge you to support the program.
Thank you. Annette Isaacson, Lisa Van Duzen.
I have been involved, I'm Annette Isaacson. I've been involved with the Cool Block program since 2016, and I joined because I wanted to see us lower our carbon footprint. I think global warming is the defining problem of our time, and today we got to see the map of all the Cool Block neighborhoods that have already joined. And what I thought was so exciting when I did my block was that when we first started talking about our carbon footprint, people took it so seriously. It was so wonderful to have a serious conversation about it. And now our city is being, lots of conversations are being taken and actions being taken to lower our carbon footprint and to make our city safer for emergency. I also wanted to read a letter from Sharon Elliott, who wasn't able to be here tonight. She says, "As a former Cool Block leader and a block preparedness coordinator, assert a zero-waste leader, and vice president of the Adobe Meadow Neighborhood Association, I've had experience with several groups in Palo Alto concerned with helping neighbors and changing behavior. They all add value to our community, and I've found that the Cool Block has particular strengths that maximize effectiveness and even multiply the effect of other groups. Cool Block's unique structure brings people together every two weeks for five months to work together on lowering their carbon footprint, using resources wisely, becoming disaster-ready, and appreciating their neighbors and their neighborhood. This format is a crucial piece that helps people build trust and commit to act. The other groups I'm familiar with don't offer the same level of support and encouragement." So I'm hoping that you will support our plea for the $25,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Nissen and council members. I'm Lisa Van Duzen, and I am here as a co-leader of our Cool Block group, which was on what is referred to as the bleeding edge. We were the alpha group, which meant that we didn't have some of the wonderful advantages of the groups that are doing it now, and I'm very glad that we did that for many of the reasons that have already been stated. Rather than talking about my experience in the program and with our block, and I would echo all the positive things people have said, despite the fact that we didn't have as advanced technology that the groups do now, but rather to talk about this investment. And I think this is a, you were talking about $350,000 a month, and you are now talking about $25,000 or $100,000 a year. And I think Sandra used the word leverage, and Annette just talked about amplification, multipliers. I think all of those are words that are appropriate for this situation. This is a tiny amount of money that can make so many programs that already exist that the city is paying vastly more money for to be adopted. And I see this all the time. I worked at the Palo Alto Weekly for many years and saw the amount of money that the city spends to advertise programs in hopes that they will be adopted. This is a bargain. And if you think about the Palo Alto Arts Center, it also has a volunteer coordinator. Those people make things possible that would not happen otherwise. So I think it's a really intelligent investment, and climate change is the defining issue of our time. This grassroots efforts will deal with the reduction, mitigation, adaptation, all of those things. And it really will catalyze and has catalyzed citizens, creating a model. Talk about wanting to be a model for design. This is a way of being a model of connecting dots, and I think you will all be proud and wanting to say you voted for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Last two speakers, Hillary Glenn and John Kelly.
Good evening. Today, we are facing discord and tribalism, not only in our country, but also in our city. Many of us in the room and across the city hold very different visions of what we think Palo Alto should become, and we're none of us shy of expressing our opinions. But climate change is the honey badger. It doesn't care about our divisions and discord. Reference that obviously none of you got. So tonight, we need to set aside our differences and find solutions that will start to bend the curve on carbon creation. Cool Block is the only program that we've found that successfully supports and encourages behavior changes to reduce carbon creation. And let's face it, Palo Alto creates a lot of carbon because we're a very well-to-do area. We drive more, we live in bigger houses, we fly more, we buy more, we waste more than people who have less income. So the Cool Block is helping us meet our city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, joining other U.S. city-states and businesses who are reducing their carbon creation even while Washington, Washington, D.C. sits on the sidelines. But carbon reduction is not the only benefit of the program. By strengthening the social fabric, neighbors can be more prepared for emergencies and more capable of supporting each other in the case of a major disaster. And by facilitating neighbors working together on carbon reduction and emergency prep, we find areas of common ground and common purpose, regardless of which political signs we choose to put in our front yards. So thank you for supporting the Cool Block program. So in addition to reducing carbon and increasing preparedness, we might just restore a little bit more civility in the neighborhood and the city as a result of this program.
Thank you. And last speaker, John Kelly.
Mayor Nissen, Vice Mayor Phil Suth, council members. I really like what Ms. Glenn just said about speaking to people in your neighborhood that you might not necessarily agree with, and that's been one of the huge benefits for us on our block. As Lisa told you, we were co-leaders of the alpha group and our block and community center, and I was surprised at how much I learned about how to actually make change happen in terms of combating global warming through local action as a result of the Cool Block program. I thought I knew a lot of this stuff, and it turns out I didn't. As a result of participating in the Cool Block program, we installed a photovoltaic system on our roof. Indirectly, we added a furnace that with much higher efficiency, we chose a much smaller garbage can. All of those things are essentially benefits to the city that are coming to the city for a trivial amount of money. What's being proposed here, and what the staff has done a great job of reworking in this proposal, is essentially a public-private partnership. So all of you who are concerned about fiscal responsibility on behalf of the city, I commend you for that, but this is a great opportunity to get better bang for your buck. It's effectively a force multiplier for a lot of other programs that the city has. And those who contend that somehow this program competes with emergency preparedness programs or other civic programs, I have to say, you are frankly wrong. That's not what this does. It actually complements them tremendously. We were fortunate enough to have, as one of our Cool Block participants, the person who is not only the leader for our local area for emergency preparedness, but also more of a regional, a neighborhood-wide emergency service preparedness person who volunteers for the city, and he got tremendous benefit out of this program. So I can't imagine a better way for the city to spend $25,000. And I can tell you this, even if we're going to spend more money in the future, we judge our family and its values by how we spend our money, and we should apply the same standard to the city. Spend your money wisely and use it to support the Cool Block program and to fight global warming here with boots on the ground at the local level. Thank you.
So thank all of you for speaking tonight. That takes us back to the consent calendar, where we started to have a motion quite a while ago, and a second.
Do the no votes speak after you vote?
Yes, they will speak after we vote.
When you're done, may I have the opportunity to address the council, just given some comments that were particularly made? Appreciate that.
Would you like to do that after we vote or now?
It's your preference.
Let's, we'll do the three of you afterward, and we will vote now. Was there a second to your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had two of them.
We prefer two seconds to just one. Thank you for voting on the board. So we have, this looks unanimous, but actually there are two no votes. Councilmember Holman, do you want to go first, and then Councilmember Koo? And I think, city attorney, after our last meeting with this, we discussed a time limit for the no comments, and was it two minutes or three minutes? Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Holman.
So what was it, reminder, two minutes or three? Three. Three? Okay, thank you. Yes, this is, well, I think it's come a long way, and the community is pretty divided on this. I mean, the speakers were not 50/50 on this tonight, but there are definitely different perspectives on this, on this item. My block also was a Cool Block, and I was glad and happy to participate in that. Our experience was somewhat different than what some other blocks have reported. It wasn't negative, it just wasn't so positive as what other blocks have reported. And that's okay. I still think the intentions and the endeavor is very positive and very worthwhile, and I very much appreciate that. My concern is that, you know, as we're trying to tighten our belts, some of us are anyway, that the cost of $25,000 didn't sound like much, and it's not that much all things considered. What concerns me is that going forward, once this contract is signed, that there's a significant amount of staff time dedicated to it, $75,000 worth. And we hear very regularly how we are short-staffed, and we don't have staff to do this or that. And that's a really big concern of mine. If they're working on this, they're not working on something else. There were a lot of, many of my colleagues were at several events this weekend. There were three neighborhood large events this week, this weekend, and, you know, certs were out in full force, the Know Your Neighbor grants were utilized, and helped a lot of the neighborhood groups have really well, well-populated events. And I know those are like once or twice a year, but many of the neighborhood associations have monthly meetings. And I think if we're going to try to help move something like this forward, I think we need to still rely on volunteers to do it. My concern is really the staff implication with this. I think if we spent $25,000 to help seed the neighborhood groups, to help support and greater, in a greater fashion, supplement their efforts to get to know their neighbors and forward the emergency prep activities, I think we'd be much better off. And frankly, as I've been out there more lately, I've been hearing a fair amount of comment about how we need to rely more and more on volunteers because the staff expenses and all that goes along with that are just not sustainable. So it really comes down to more economics than anything else for me, but I appreciate the intentions, and I know that a lot of good work has been done, so I want to acknowledge that.
Councilmember Koo, care to speak to your dissent?
So Councilmember Holman has said many things that I had wanted to say also. I agree with most of her points. You know, I look at this, it's a volunteer program. I would hope that you would be doing it for the reasons that you want to better your community, like you said. So when there's money coming out from the very beginning of a program, then I start to have to wonder, then I start having to wonder, you know, where is the volunteerism in this? And it's setting a precedent, so moving forward, every time we have a program that comes forward that's going to benefit the community, we're going to have to pay for Emergency prep, the ones that I led, I spent years on it as a leader, and I didn't expect a penny from the city. I did it because it was a community effort I wanted to do. I wanted to help out the community, I wanted to give something back. And I came out of pocket thousands of dollars on printing and on making sure that reading material and presentation material was given to all the people who attended the meetings. So I think in a way, you know, this is an insult to a lot of the volunteers that had spent years and years giving back to the community. But I am encouraged to hear that, you know, you're doing so well with a program in the alpha phase, so it's kind of surprising that we need to go into the beta space and, beta stage, and still spend money on it. You know, it is what it is. Good luck. You guys are doing great. I just wish it was more of a volunteer effort that you truly give back rather than taking money from the general fund, which could go towards something else, such as the Know Your Neighborhood grant. Your Neighborhood grant.
City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Maybe I can, let's see, maybe I can help close the divide in the community a little bit with this. First of all, there were some comments, again, made about my role in all of this. I answered that the last time this came up with council members, even with the media. I have no formal relationship, I'm not on the board. I mean, I've expressed support for ideas, as many ideas in town. This is no different, in my view, than the work that I did with leaders in the Block Preparedness Program and PAN. And when they say, "Thanks for helping sponsor recognition events that we do," we'll either find funding or space to support those. Or how I even engaged with neighborhood leaders to create the entire Office of Emergency Services, which provides staff support ongoing to our volunteer programs with existing staffing. Even last time that this came up, we just coincidentally enough happened to have a $75,000 a year staffing in the Office of Emergency Services, supporting our emergency preparedness program. That is having staff people supporting volunteer efforts. We spend significant staff time supporting the Know Your Neighbors Grant Program. So these are partnerships with the community. And that's, the Cool Block program has been refashioned in response to feedback, just like the ARB feedback on the building improved it, to make it very clear that we're not directly paying volunteers to do work, but we are supporting community efforts. So I think it's very, very important to clear the record up on all of those factors. And I would just end with, I find it amazing that we think we've solved climate change even in our own town. We have identified goals on electrification and natural gas and EVs and other issues where we're spending more than this, and I think Lisa Van Duzen mentioned it, in advertising and trying to get hands-on connections with our customers, who also happen to be citizens and neighbors in our town, to have more uptake in the programs that we have. And the idea that actually folks might get more educated and be able to help each other and reconnect us, actually, I can't imagine that we think you can have too much civic participation, that we can have too much social connectedness, we can have too much neighborliness, that we can have too much learning and sharing between the city or between neighbors, that we're done with that. I just want to, Mary Gordon started this meeting off really nicely, right? A very kind, experienced, positive, optimistic voice. She said, "We live in a paradise." We live in a paradise. She said, "I have a responsibility, and everyone in Palo Alto has a responsibility to honor that privilege and move forward on that." And then when we all clapped for her, she said, made the point of saying, "You don't do it alone, you do it together." That's all I have to say.
Thank you. We appreciate having this vote over with and move on to the next, the next part of our calendar tonight, which is number 10. And number 10 is a continuation, many of you will know, which is the adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.68, which is the Rental Housing Stabilization of Title IX, so forth. It's all listed here in front of you, and will go up on the board right behind me. So this one was initially removed from consent on September 10. And I'm going to ask the city manager to introduce this, but also our city attorney to say a few words about it.
May I introduce Molly Stump, our city attorney, to the city council?
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Just very briefly, so this is the item that was removed from your consent calendar. It was a second reading, and so there was no report to support it. We have made some small modifications, so I'll just highlight those briefly. So we are bringing forward the ordinance that was adopted on first reading, and you may adopt that on second reading tonight, in which case it goes into effect in 31 days. We also, based on public comments that we heard that evening, to support the council in considering options, we did incorporate one of the changes that many members of the public spoke about, which would be to eliminate the means testing provision as a second option for you. You could also do other things. That option or another significant change would mean that this needs to be treated as a new first reading. And if the council did pass something like that this evening, then it would need to be scheduled for a second reading, which requires 11 days and then goes into effect 30 days after that. We did take the opportunity, since we had another week, to look carefully at the material that we had drafted for you. And we did make a non-substantive clarifying change in an uncodified section, which is to clarify the council's intent that regardless of what you adopt tonight, that the full relocation assistance payments are applicable to any no-fault eviction that occurs after the effective date of the ordinance, regardless of when tenants may have been informed that the tendency is ending. So in other words, if there are folks out there who've gotten notice of eviction, but the eviction is not finalized, we've drafted language to make it very, very clear that it's council's intent that the full relocation would apply to those evictions if they occur after the effective date of this ordinance. And then the second clarification is even more obscure. It has to do with the potential that the emergency ordinance could be challenged in court, and if it were invalidated, we added procedural language to ensure that this ordinance will replace that one instead of amend it, so that we will have a whole ordinance left in our code. We're happy to answer any questions to support the council's discussion this evening. Thank you.
So before we begin our general discussion, are there any questions? I do have a light from Councilmember Fine, but before we do that, are there any questions from Molly that, before we begin? If not, then, Councilmember Fine.
It wasn't a question so much as comment and motion, but I see we have some public speakers.
Yes, did you, so not a question, it was a comment?
I don't want to make a motion, right? I think we should hear from the public first.
Okay, so there are a number of people from the public to speak. They're all up there, Michelle Kraus, Matthew Warren, Stephanie Munoz, Dennis Backland, Kevin Goulding, just to start. Once again, if you come down and sit in the front row and you're ready to speak, that would help a great deal.
Time? Am I supposed to start?
Let me do this tonight. We're really late, once again. Our apologies for that. We're going to limit you to a minute. I know that's not very long, but in the interest of us actually voting on this tonight, which I know you would like us to do.
We would.
Yes, so hold it to a minute. If you go over a couple of seconds, it's fine.
Certainly. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm Michelle Kraus, who can't even think straight at this hour. I'm a morning bird. Please, let's meet at 6:00 a.m. In any event, housing is a human right. You heard my colleagues in here today pleading for climate change being the issue of our generation. Well, the issue of Northern California is housing. I want to commend the city attorney for the alternative B that she has created. We wanted to speak tonight to remove the means testing. I will refer to what has recently occurred in Menlo Park. This is a good ordinance. They use means testing, but they modify it to 200%. So I urge you to consider B and move this forward and vote tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for your brevity. Matthew Warren?
Good evening. Matthew Warren with the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, and I'm here to continue to stand in solidarity with the residents of the President Hotel. Council should adopt the proposed ordinance in Attachment B tonight. The strong proposal is appropriate because it eliminates the income qualification provision and because it closer approximates the relocation payment necessary to actually mitigate the displacement of dozens of households. We recommend one minor amendment, however. Section 9.68.035, that's the whole thing, subsection B, number 10, should be stricken. That catch-all provision renders everything within the list preceding it ineffective, and that single piece is confusing and problematic, and it really should be removed. Lastly, I encourage you to enforce your existing laws and to prevent the eviction of President Hotel residents who have been denied one-year leases. This refusal of the, by the previous owner is against your own laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Munoz, Dennis Backland, Kevin Goulding.
Good evening. Guys, you're on sum-up already. I need to make you aware of the reason that I am so interested in this project. I came into the rental business personally when I was about, oh, eight, nine years old. It was the start of the Second World War, and my mother turned my father's medical offices, because he was gone off, into housing for Girl Marines. So there wasn't any question but what the people who were there, our tenants, were the, participating in a community effort. And I'm here to tell you that I've come to realize that, to some degree, all tenants are participating in a community effort. They pay the rent, and the rent pays the mortgage. That's part of the economic rising. And I think you have to realize that that has to be acknowledged. It's not just some kind of charitable thing that we're doing for the poor refugees that come in that we feel sorry for.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hard to tell.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You started out with yellow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Dennis Backland?
Right.
Kevin Goulding? Mary Reardon?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I have a couple of recommendations around the ordinance that might have to be carried out at a subsequent council meeting. It's your decision. I do recommend that the council add to the rental housing ordinance the provision that no-fault evictions at the president shall not be carried out until the new owner of the president has submitted a project application and all required permits have been approved. I believe such an ordinance provision is fair and just. If council action on this provision would require public notice for the next council meeting, then I request that that be done. Also regarding the one-year leases, we have not had that at the president. If it is possible for the council to institute that, it would be deeply appreciated. We look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Goulding, and Mary Reardon, and Jeffrey Jones.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. I'm Kevin Goulding, I'm a resident of the President Hotel Apartments. And just wanted to remind you that we're down to eight weeks now from our notice of eviction. Please remove the means test from the test qualifier for displacement assistance. And some of us, as you may not know, are unemployed. Some are entrepreneurs, and some are working on startups. So please remove the means test. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, we've had so many cards on this, we're going to stop the cards now, but you know you will get to speak. Greetings.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Mary Reardon, I'm also a resident of the President Hotel. I'd just like to thank you all for the time you've taken to discuss and consider the impact of the removal of 75 rental units in the downtown area, as well as that effect on the tenants being forced to find a new home. 57 days is a sobering number. Tonight, I come to you with three requests. One, that the remains test be removed from both the urgency order and the corresponding permanent ordinance. Two, that the relocation benefit be defined as three months of current market rate rent. And finally, in order to clarify and strengthen council's intent, I ask that you remove number 10 from Section 2B. I've appreciated listening to your frank discussions, and I look forward to more this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeffrey Jones, Owen Lewis, and Kelsey Baines.
Good late evening, Honorable Mayor and city councilable. You've left the residents of the president with little to no choice. I'm going to take a slightly different tact here. Based on what city council has not done, you've not upheld the one-year ordinance, you've not upheld your own ruling on intended use for the president, you've not stood up for affordable housing. You've left us with no choice, based on what AJ Capital has done. AJ Capital has made us, the city, look bad because they've caught the city flat-footed, unprepared. And worst of all, AJ Capital has caused us to fight amongst ourselves instead of applying creative thinking to the problem. You've left us with no choice except to continue fighting, and if we have to, to take it to the courts. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for speaking. Owen Lewis, Kelsey Baines.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Owen Lewis. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the California Apartments Association and a lifelong Palo Alto resident. I believe that tonight, we can adopt an ordinance that would address the needs of the renters of the President Hotel without adopting a one-size-fits-all reactionary policy. And the way we can do that is that we can focus these relocation payments on the people that need it the most, and secondly, that we can focus the parameters of what triggers those relocation payments as to when a property is removed from the market or has undergone a change of use. I just want to remind the council members that these relocation payments, which are no small amount, will be paid for entirety, no assistance from the city, on the backs of local landlords. So thus, the responsible thing to do is to ensure that there is some sort of income testing to make sure that these subsidies that are going to be paid for by other Palo Alto residents go to the people that actually do need them the most. On a personal note, council members, I know this is an extremely difficult position to hear a dozen renters from the President's Hotel talk about their situation. I would just ask that, you know, as stewards of the city, that we make our policy decisions with facts and data. Thank you so much, council members, for your diligence and your time.
Thank you. Kelsey Baines, Mary Sylvester.
Good evening. I'm Kelsey Baines. I support the changes made to the emergency ordinance and stand in solidarity with the Hotel President residents. I also support eliminating means testing in order to protect all of the residents and advise the council that income may not be indicative of current financial status as people may have student loan bills or medical bills, various debts outstanding. That said, I think what makes this displacement so devastating is that this building is currently illegal and that it is too dense and too tall and underparked, and would caution the people watching this debate to consider which council members actually support buildings like this being built. Tom Dubois is running an ad right now that says density is a choice, and he's absolutely right. Palo Alto can choose density, or it can choose suburban sprawl, in oppressive traffic, and poverty, and homelessness, and more displacement. So supporting renters in a substantive way means supporting policies to build more housing like this. Thanks.
Mary Sylvester, Chris Kellogg, Matthew Reed.
Good evening, Mayor Ness and council members. I'm Mary Sylvester, a 41-year, pardon me, resident of Palo Alto, and I urge the council to adopt Attachment B. I want to thank the council and staff for taking the time to really consider the exigencies of the residents of the President Hotel and how this applies to the broader renter community, as well as... as well as those of us who are fortunate enough to be homeowners. This impacts all of us. And a previous speaker had spoken about speakers tonight only being from the President Hotel. That is not true. There are many of us that have spoken at length on behalf of renters and residents. Okay, two quick things. So please remove the income qualifications on the ordinance. And number two, reduce the number of units from 50 to four. And lastly, renter stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Reed. Chris Kellogg, sorry. Chris Kellogg.
Thank you, council and Madam Mayor, for your time tonight. I'm here to ask council to remove the means testing from the ordinance, and I'm here to ask you to enforce the one-year lease, which already exists. Last week was a step forward in passing the rental housing study. You know, and to paraphrase some council members, you know, "On the way to solving the problem and getting to the root issue, you're going to go to the emergency room." This, well, this is one of those trips to the emergency room. We have 57 days left, and Palo Alto is losing a significant amount of housing. I ask you to take action and protect all residents from no-fault evictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Matthew Reed, correct?
Correct. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Matthew Reed. I'm the Policy Manager at Silicon Valley at Home. We are here tonight to urge this council to raise the income restrictions for households that are otherwise eligible for relocation assistance under this ordinance. This ordinance has been precipitated by the proposed conversion of the President's Hotel apartment from a residential use to a luxury boutique hotel. This would eliminate 75 naturally affordable homes in the heart of Palo Alto. Most importantly, this conversion will cause major hardship to the displaced residents, all of them. I do not need to tell you that the county's median income does not go as far here in Palo Alto as it does in South County. We believe that if we are to take seriously our charge of responding to the affordable housing needs of Santa Clara County, we must take action to preserve and protect vulnerable rental households and communities, and we urge you to join us and act tonight to meet this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you.
A tale of two cities. If you look at the August 24th Palo Alto Weekly, Mayor Ruben Abrika, the Mayor of East Palo Alto, asks his community in a State of the City address, "How do we help our community? How do we take actions to help each other?" So East Palo Alto has housed the homeless. It's provided parking on city property for homeless vehicles, for RVs and cars. There are other cities that are doing similar things. Mountain View has rent control. East Palo Alto has rent control. These are role model cities. Menlo Park is talking about rent control. We need rent control. The outrageous increases in rents in this city make it easy for some landlords who gouge tenants, and they have a lovely October or September. One minute just doesn't give us a chance to even speak our mind. How unfortunate. This paradise does not protect tenants. You need to support the community. Our community is the residents of the President Hotel and everyone else who's having a hard time making a living.
Thank you. Iqbal Sarang.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I agree, one minute just does not give us enough time to express our thoughts. Dennis Backland just whispered to me that he forgot or did not have time to say that he is not able to find an equivalent rental place with handicap access right now in the city. Coming to a couple of points I want to make. Some members have stated diversity as a major want and need for the city. And if renters of the President don't exhibit the best form of economic diversity, what does? It's across the board. Almost 50% of the city are renters. If we don't keep our rental properties accessible, aren't we in danger of creating an obstacle and blocking the workforce renters out of Palo Alto? And the three-month benefit that you're offering is needed as first month, last month, and security deposit. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. L. David Barron, Simone Boswell, Steve Rudinsky, Herb Borack, and Jeff Brown is our last speaker.
Good evening. I'm David Barron. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I wanted to say three things.
If you pull the mic up so it's right at you. That's much better.
Sorry. I wanted to say three things. One is that I support raising the level of income qualification for the relocation benefit. And two is that I support expanding this to smaller buildings than 50 units, which is a pretty small number of buildings. The third one is, I know there have been a number of comments about item B10 in the list. Looking at it, I think some of that is actually confusion, that that list is formatted in a very confusing way. Items seven, eight, nine, and 10 are an entirely different list from items one through six. And what looks to be the second half of item six is actually the header for a different list. And I think the formatting is such that that section is confusing, although I'm not completely sure. I would also support Kelsey Baines's comments earlier.
Simone Boswell. Hi, good evening. Okay, maybe you can hear me without that. Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. We have 57 days, and I want to, thank you. I wanted to read something out of City Council Resolution Number 9653, introduced in past, where's Cory? In December 2016, this might sound familiar to him. Palo Alto community spirit is one of protection and support. What we're asking here tonight, what we're asking here tonight is that this council and this staff support us and protect us. Us, the residents, the 44% of the tenants in Palo Alto. Not the big bad wolf, AJ Capital. Us. Please support us tonight. Remove the means testing. Raise the amounts. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Steve Rudinsky.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your service, especially in these late nights that you have to put up with. I just want to run a little back-of-the-envelope number. It was said here that this will be an expense, a big expense. At $3,000 to $4,000 a rent per month, times 50 units, is roughly $150,000 to $200,000 a month, times 12 months, is well over $1 million a year. The President Hotel went from a hotel to an apartment. Now it's going back to a hotel in 100 years. So let's just divide that in half. Every $50 million in rent, you're going to have an expense. I say remove the means test. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borack and Jeff Brown. Last speaker is Jeff Brown.
I believe that the ordinance should apply to structures of five units or more rather than 50. And I believe Attachment B answers my question, that it should be, have the means test removed. I believe that staff should respond in open session to some of the comments made by the attorney for the President Hotel, including whether the purpose of Chapter 9.68 includes the subject of the ordinance with or without the means test, whether the Brown Act permits you to change the number from 50 to five. And if not, then you would still have time for two readings after tonight. And also, the language of the ordinance referring to 50 or more rental units, does that refer to a building like the President Hotel that has 75 units in the structure? Or is it only referring to how many renters are left now? Because if it's less than 50 renters and it refers to the number of renters left, then it doesn't apply. Thank you.
Thanks, Herb. Jeff Brown.
Council members, first of all, a slight digression. I want to thank you for your support a couple of weeks ago for the state water board's Bay Delta Plan. I appreciate that, and I think a lot of people do. For all of the reasons we just heard repeatedly from the supporters of the Cool Block program, Palo Alto cannot afford to lose the affordable Hotel President Apartments. I firmly believe that a community, not a government, but a community solution to preserving this vital city asset can be found. Some of us who are still getting over the shock of the sale of this property are now pursuing that. What I'm asking from you is time. Please open your minds to using all means at your disposal to delay the eviction of the hotel residents and give us that time. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. And I'm going to now bring it back to council, and the first slide I see is from Council Member Fine.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming, speaking tonight, and also thank you for our city attorney for putting this together. Just for the record, I did review the video of your previous meeting and the comments there, and I think the council erred in a policy way by imposing the means testing. So while I understand that relocation assistance essentially is a transfer from one renter to another, I think it's an expression of our values, and what we're saying is that those impacted by eviction deserve some kind of subsidy. And honestly, I mean, you can look at these numbers. These are not huge numbers, but it's something, and I think that's important as a form of renter protection. I also understand that it's kind of a backstop, and yes, it does impose some hurdles up front in terms of the subsidy will just be charged in other rentals. That's unfortunate. So I know it's already 10:40, and I don't think we have to be here all night. So I'm going to move Staff Recommendation 2. And just one or two quick questions. So just to be absolutely clear, Recommendation 2 is without the means testing, correct? Without any means testing?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I guess my only other question was, a few people mentioned this item 10 for no specified cause. Can you quickly just describe to us what that is?
Sure. So one of the commenters actually was correct, did a careful reading of this section. So there is a formatting error that would make it a little bit easier to read, although it's still challenging to understand. So looking at this section of the ordinance, the first six reasons under 9.68.035B are what we typically think of as renter error or poor behavior that would justify a fault eviction. Okay? And then the second sentence after six really should have been, the margin should have been justified further to the left.
No fault.
Okay. And now we're describing types of no-fault evictions. The first three of those, seven, eight, and nine, are required. Okay? Those, the city must include those in all cities that have regulations that regulate the reasons for eviction, include these three. And then item number 10 reflects the current status quo in Palo Alto, which is that we do not have a ban on no reason at all, right? So I think what's being proposed here is that we change that policy, which is a significant item. And in fact, it's one that you discussed last week along with price controls and decided not to even refer to committee. So it's being asked for you to do it tonight directly as a council. It is a significant change.
Okay, so item number 10 there allows no-fault evictions for no specified cause.
That's correct. And it says that if a landlord with 50 or more units does that, they do need to pay relocation. They may do it, but they need to pay relocation.
Okay. Then I'm fine with it as is. I would just, you know, encourage staff to fix formatting. I'm sure you will. And with that, I hope we can move this forward. Thank you.
Sorry. Councilmember Walbach followed by either Karen and Tom, or Tom and Karen.
I'm glad that Councilmember Fine has joined us. He obviously was unable to make the council meeting when we first discussed this, I guess it was three weeks ago now. Feels like a lifetime ago. We had a supermajority of council members present that night who were in favor of passing this, as we are now proposing with this motion. And we've added one more council member to it. Hopefully, if everybody, you know, sticks to their guns with what their previous position was. This was definitely the clear preference of the council majority. We didn't have enough votes to pass an urgency or emergency ordinance of this nature, but we definitely had enough votes to pass a regular ordinance of this nature. Though there was a, you know, some, I'm not sure what the right phrase is to describe it, but basically a threat by people who were in favor of the emergency ordinance, that if we removed the means test from the permanent ordinance, they wouldn't vote for the emergency ordinance at all. So that's no longer an issue. Now we're just talking about a regular ordinance. It only takes five votes to pass. I hope we will have those five votes and more. It would be great if we could do this unanimously and send a really strong message that what we tried to do three weeks ago is, in fact, the will of the entire council. So I would support, I would implore all of my colleagues to vote for this, as we so nearly did three weeks ago.
Okay. As I said, I don't know who punched it first. Well, you can duke it out down there.
Did rock, paper, scissors, and I won. First of all, I want to thank the maker and the second of the motion. I'm supporting it. I want to say just three things real quick because it's late. I don't think this is radical at all. It mirrors what a lot of other communities are doing. And that was all covered in the staff report a couple of weeks ago, which I think was a pretty good staff report. Adding the means requirement meant that it wanted to apply to most Palo Altons. And, you know, with time to think about it, I think we had an ethical and moral imperative to fix that mistake, and I'm glad we're doing that tonight. And then thirdly, I just want to make it clear that this is not aimed at the President Hotel or any other particular project. It's meant to help all residents that are faced with eviction. So I hope all of us supporting this motion make that clear, that this is a general ordinance. So eviction without cause is, I think, probably a renter's worst nightmare. So the one thing I think this ordinance does is it provides a disincentive to remove a large amount of housing from the community and support the ordinance. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I'm pleased we are where we are so far, and it looks like we have support. And I wish we could have done this a few weeks ago, but we are where we are and happy that this is happening. I have one question for the city attorney, and this has come up a few times, both in weeks past and now, and it won't be the question you're anticipating, I bet. And that is, I think it probably refers to, oh, now I'm not finding it. It has to do with where you're taking a rental, shoot, what number is it? A rental unit where you're going to be doing work to it so that it is uninhabitable.
Yes, it's Section C, after the list we just talked about.
Okay.
Whenever a landlord seeks a no-fault eviction, as defined in this section, other than temporary displacement of 31 days or fewer. displacement of 31 days or fewer.
And so the question has come up about, shouldn't we have permits in hand before eviction could actually happen? Otherwise, wouldn't we have people perhaps gaming the system so that somebody could say, you know, invoke the Ellis Act and then boot everybody out? And then let the building stand for a long time? And then reinstall or reinstate? Is it the same property as a rental property? So we've just displaced people for no real reason?
So the state of California has dealt with that in a specific way. The Ellis Act allows jurisdictions that have full rent control. That means they regulate price increases of rental units. The state law allows those jurisdictions to enact certain protective measures to prevent that type of gaming, including requiring right of first refusal or at the same rent as the person was paying when they were evicted if the unit comes back online within a certain period of time. So we don't, we're not in a situation where we would be able to use those types of rules at this time.
And does it have to be specifically rent control? Or could it be, you know, renter protection? What exactly does it have to be? And this is for future reference.
It's rent control.
Literally, rent control. And I guess the other question is, what specifically triggers the relocation benefits? Is it when notice is given that leases aren't going to be renewed?
So we added an uncodified section to make it clear during transitional period that the obligation to pay the full amount of relocation applies. This is the council's intention. It applies in any case where an eviction has not occurred, meaning the date of eviction has not come to pass, when this ordinance becomes effective. But barring that situation, which is a transitional situation around a new regulation coming into place. The ordinance defines two stages. So there's some detail here, which I will try to find, that the payment, half the payment is paid at the time that the landlord provides the notice of eviction. And the remainder is paid to each tenant when that tenant vacates the unit. There's also some additional payments that tenants may be eligible for if they are over 60 years of age, disabled, or low income. And that amount is payable within 15 days. It's either payable at the time of the notice, or if the landlord isn't aware that the tenant qualifies. Then it's required within 15 days of the landlord receiving that notice from the tenant, that they believe they're eligible for that additional payment.
Glad to have that clarification. And you had said also that the reason for the split payment is so if somebody is looking for another unit and they find something that actually has some money to be able to make a down payment or deposit. So, in a practical sense.
Yes. It's structured that way to allow folks who have been given notice of eviction, some additional funds to work with as they're looking for housing.
Okay. I think those are the questions, and happy we're finally here. I hope at some future, at future time, I won't try to make this amendment tonight, because I think we'll get into a long debate. And the city attorney has indicated previously that it would have to be re-noticed because of a significant change. But I hope at some point in the future, we lower the number of units from 50 down to at least 20. But I'm afraid if we tried to do that at this juncture, that we would delay the passage of this by maybe even months. So I'll not try to do that tonight, but that's my hope.
My question was answered, although there is just one mistake in here. It says on page two of Attachment B, number I on the very top, I think, third sentence down, it should be "or" instead of "of." Just a tiny mistake.
Are you talking about I? Which line?
One.
Yes, you're quite correct. That's a typo. We'll correct that. So that, on the third line there, it says "of," and it should be "or." Thank you, Councilmember Ku.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I don't see any other lights. So does anyone else wish to speak? Greg Tanaka?
I have a question for the city attorney. So I'm looking at this letter from AJ Capital. And, you know, one of the first things in there on page two is that the ordinance would violate constitutional rights to due process of law. And it cites a court case, DeAnza versus Palm Springs Rent Review Commission, where ordinances that were passed after eviction notice has gone out couldn't be enacted. So I wanted to see, I wanted to understand the city attorney's opinion about this, to understand why this would still affect, this ordinance would still affect the President's Hotel.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. We reviewed, there were several letters from the Rutan firm representing AJ Capital. We reviewed them. We don't believe that any of the issues that they raised should prevent you from taking this action tonight, should you wish to do so for policy reasons. In terms of evaluating cases and giving you legal risk advice, that's something that we do in a closed format. So we do that either by a confidential memo or in a closed session. It's not appropriate for open session.
Okay. Because I, I guess my, well then, because my worry here is that we're exposing the city to significant legal liability. Because when I looked at this, it looked, it looked like this wouldn't apply. And so if this does pass, and I'm not a lawyer, that's why I'm asking you for this, it would seem that we're exposing the city to significant legal liability. And so I just wanted to understand the rationale, because I think all of us here are looking out for the best interest of the city. And we need to have the proper legal advice. But so are you saying maybe we should have this in a closed session instead, instead of open session right now?
So it is my opinion, and that of my office, that this ordinance does not expose the city to significant legal liability or any legal liability, that it is legal and enforceable. Now, your question does raise a point that is worth noting for council and for the public, which is that this ordinance regulates third-party behavior. It does not set up an administrative process by which that conduct is enforceable in the first instance at an administrative tribunal run by the city. So this is a rule that will create obligations and responsibilities and benefits, and it will be enforceable elsewhere by others. And it's very possible that there could be some disputes around that.
Okay. Because to me, then, it seems that we should have perhaps had this in closed session so that you could be open to talk about, what is your legal rationale as to why we've been declared? Because it seemed, it would seem that the arguments made in this letter were very significant, and I seemed to believe them. But, you know, I could be convinced, but I need to understand your arguments. And because it, I mean, I actually looked, I would have looked up the case myself, and it seemed pretty damn clear that we would be in big trouble here. So I wanted to understand your point of view. But I'm not a lawyer, right? So that's why I wanted to try to see if you could shed some light on why this ordinance, which, you know, the timing of it, the construction of it seems to be very targeted to the President's Hotel, which it largely is. And the letters that came back from the law firm kind of pointed out very clearly. And I guess I would want to see your expert legal advice as to why we're not putting the city at significant legal risk by doing this ordinance.
Yeah. Greg, that's probably a conversation you should have with the city attorney later. And I-
Well, I guess my point is, should we, should, would it make more sense, just so that all the council members have all the information? Should, would it make sense for us to-
So, Madam Mayor-
Can I call a question? I'd like to call a question.
Yeah. I do, I do need to state that this ordinance is a rule that is generally applicable to landlords of units with 50 or more. And that's what's before you. That's what you'll be voting on. So I do take issue with the comment that suggests that the ordinance is directed at a particular property. Structurally, I schedule closed sessions with you or send you confidential legal advice when I believe it is warranted to do so. I just said a minute ago, and I'll repeat. This ordinance is lawful and does not put the city in legal jeopardy. And I'm happy to provide detailed follow-up with you. It is not appropriate at an open council meeting. I'm available to you before the meeting and after to discuss this in detail.
I think it'd be great for you to kind of send your analysis here. If that has to be a closed session, or if that has to be offline, that's fine. But I guess the problem is that we're trying to make a decision tonight. And so are you suggesting that we should delay this until we get your memo?
Okay. So I think, you know, I think there's, I think this group is ready to vote. Do you need to add to that? Okay, quickly.
Yeah, I just want to put a couple of things on the record. One, we had this letter that's being referenced three weeks ago. And any council member who had any questions about this had ample opportunity over the last three weeks to discuss that with the city attorney in a private setting, because this is not the appropriate time to discuss things like that, and we know that. Secondly, I want to emphasize the point that the city attorney made, which is that this ordinance is a policy matter directed at a class of properties, a class of buildings. It does not apply to any particular property. There are a lot of Palo Altons across the city who live in properties that this ordinance would cover. And the purpose of this ordinance is to cover any tenant living in any of those properties around the city that have 50 or more units, and to provide any of those tenants with relocation assistance should they face eviction.
So with that, I want to say one final thing. Although I'm going to vote for this, because we have kept it pretty straightforward tonight, we're still really flirting with rent control, no matter how you look at it. And having said that, and this will come back at another time, I am not in favor of rent control. I think this attacks one particular situation, which we've carefully woven around. But on this, at the same time, I anticipate this will come back in some other form at some other time. In the meantime, because there's an urgency to this, even though this is not essentially an urgency ordinance, that is, there's an urgency to this that we've certainly heard about since early in the summer. So with that, I would suggest that we vote. And that passes on an eight to one, with Council member Tanaka voting no, and the rest of the council all being here voting yes. So that takes us, that is the final item on our agenda for this evening, and takes us to any state, federal legislation update and so forth. And also, Councilmember Holman. But before you, I know that Vice Mayor Phil Seth wants to talk about his trip last week to Southern California. So I also have Holman, Fine, and Walbach.
Well, just real briefly, on a day trip, I went to the League of California Cities meeting on Thursday, one of the financial sessions. I had a couple interesting conversations with people from particularly Fullerton and Stockton. And I thought what I'd do is type up some notes and send it around, so I won't really summarize here, other than expectation across the board is that CalPERS rates are going to continue to increase. And there are cities out there who are farther down the path of pain than we are, and we don't want to go there. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Holman, then Fine, did you have your lighter? Fine, oh, and then Cory. Yes, just quickly, I think several of us were at wonderful neighborhood events this weekend. Adobe Meadows, Midtown, and Ventura all had very successful, really well-attended, wonderful events, and a number of block parties, too. So Palo Alto was alive and well this weekend. And I did want to thank staff for the bookmarks. Thank you very much. And if I could suggest, besides, or in addition to delivering and distributing at the places that you had indicated, if you'd also consider doing it downtown and the California Avenue shopping areas, because that's where proliferation of idling also occurs. So thank you for these. Okay. Councilmember Fine?
Sure. Just quickly, late last week, I joined a webinar by Caltrain about an update to their business plan. As you may know, Caltrain is going through a business planning process, where they're looking at service delivery, at the funding and governance structures behind it. And they offered to do it for any other council member who's interested, so just write the LPMG group, and they can clue you in. It was just a nice check-in with Caltrain.
Cory?
Couple of things. One, I was also in Long Beach at the end of last week and voted for the two resolutions that we discussed earlier. Also, in Long Beach, I bumped into, actually, there's an event celebrating the 20th anniversary of our lobbying firm in Sacramento, Townsend Public Affairs. So I went to that event and talked a little bit more to Nico DeLuca, our lobbyist, about something that we talked about a bit last Monday, which was how we can engage with our lobbying representatives a bit more on grade separation, funding, variances, et cetera, related to that. And what Adrian was just talking about, I met today with a couple members of Caltrain staff. And I think it's going to be important for the city of Palo Alto to send a letter to Caltrain, asking them to clarify the external factors that will influence our decisions, or the external constraints, such as economics, regulations, and engineering limits. And also, if they have any expectation that any of those may change in the future, because this of those may change in the future, because this will have a significant influence on what kind of options might be available to Palo Alto, either feasibly or financially. And this is something I hope we can put on the agenda, and I'll work with staff to put something like that on the agenda for the next rail committee meeting, and also to discuss something that Caltrain staff said they'd be happy to do, which is to come to rail committee meeting to discuss the Caltrain business plan, which is important for us to be clued in on, and also grade separations, and how those will relate to each other, and what that means for our timelines. And I'll work with staff to follow up on this.
If no one else, I have a couple of things. You recall, I'm on the Clean Air Board, and last week, they had a big kickoff for their new intent of being diesel-free by '33, and it was extremely well-attended. But the part that you might want to really know about is that Steve Kerr was the motivational speaker, and he was absolutely terrific, by the way. So one more comment, Mr. City Manager. We have about, I think, 45% of both high schools now are Asian, primarily Chinese students. I would think that we would want to put this in Chinese, especially at the elementary schools, as well as in English. And I think you're going to have to put both languages on one, so someone doesn't have to make any decision about who's in the car. So those are my suggestions, and-
Madam Mayor?
Remember, diesel-free by '33.
Thank you.
One real quick ledge update. We had the mayor sign a letter today to the chairperson of the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission. They are considering changes to local authority related to review timelines, fees on small cell antenna installations, so both opposing that change and asking them to postpone their decision until January. Counsel's copied on the letter. I just wanted to identify that tonight. Thank you.
Also, I forgot to mention that the mayor of Heidelberg was here last week. He came to say hello, because he was on his way to the big climate summit that was held on Thursday, and I got to meet with him for a few minutes, but Greg Schaff was kind enough to take him out for a beverage, an adult beverage, and-
A German beverage.
He seemed delighted. So it was, it was fun to see him again, and he's extremely pleased about being involved in climate issues. Okay. Molly, do you have anything to add? Okay. Thank you all.